Please be seated, everybody. Elizabeth, will you please call the rule?
Councilmember Archie?
Here.
Councilmember Baggs?
Here.
Councilmember Miles?
Here.
Councilmember Zajak?
Here.
Councilperson, uh, here.
Here. Mr. Zajak, will you lead us into prayer, please?
Lord, today we ask for your calming love in a time of uncertainty, chaos, and turbulence in our state, our country, and in our world. We ask for your guidance as we look to make decisions that affect all that we have sworn to uphold and defend. Direct our thoughts, words, decisions, and actions toward the right path and help us to stay on track. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Are we okay? All right, okay. All right, I see we have no presentations for tonight. I say we have no presentations for tonight. Do we have public speakers for agenda items? All right, I'd just like to take a brief reminder here that these are legislative items, and we'd like you to address the body of the council, no individuals when you speak, and address what council, what items you have that are action items on the agenda. Okay?
Thank you, sir.
Our first speaker that we have on the agenda is Elizabeth Adams.
I'm here to speak on the Turtle. Turtle? Okay, all right, hi. My name is Elizabeth Adams. I'm Mohawk, Six Nations Grand River Territory. I'm a museum educator, museum curator. I've worked with the American Indian Media and Policy Initiative upstate, the National Museum of the American Indian at New York, the Art Gallery of Ontario, and it was the Turtle that inspired my career. I'd like to say that I'm also the entity that proposed the landmark proposal. I'm the person who suggested to my friend Marge Gillis, who's a member of the Niagara Falls Historic Preservation Society, that the building be landmarked and saved. I'm also a contributing writer to the proposal. I did this hoping to protect and preserve its beauty and symbolism and turning it back into a museum, to educate and re-educate visitors about Indigenous history through storytelling. I'm not a public speaker, I'm a storyteller. I tell stories on the landscapes of museum walls and through cultural programming. I can tell you that Indigenous tourism is on the rise in the Western Hemisphere and that in the United States it's a $14 billion industry, and that in Canada, a smaller country, it's a $2 billion industry. But I prefer to tell you the stories I would tell visitors of the Turtle. I tell them the story of a pregnant sky woman who fell from Sky World into a dark watery abyss and was saved by a flock of geese and was laid gently on the back of the Turtle to form Turtle Island, which the building symbolizes. Or the story of the forming of the Haudenosaunee Confederacy in 1100 A.D. at Victorville, New York, and that the Great Law of Peace is symbolized by five arrows tied together signifying unity and strength of the five nations, upon which Benjamin Franklin and Thomas Jefferson based the Constitution of the United States, and that the seal of the United States uses those, a same eagle clutching a bundle of 13 arrows, signifying the 13 original colonies. I can tell you stories about the Treaty of Niagara signed at Fort Niagara in 1764, or the role the Haudenosaunee played in the War of 1812, or the role that women of the Tuscarora Nation played in tourism, in the tourism industry since first contact with Europeans. You heard our children speak about residential schools in your last meeting. I can tell you the stories of those children who, at the age of five, were forcibly removed from their homes, kidnapped, beaten, abused, sexually assaulted, and murdered. There are now over 10,000 Indigenous children lying in unmarked graves across Canada, and that in the United States, so far, there are 1,000. I can tell you the stories of thousands of Indigenous people dealing with intergenerational trauma, including my own family. I can tell you that suicide is the leading cause of death among Indigenous youth as consequences of colonialism, discrimination, community disruption, and the loss of culture and language, that in 2004, 8100,000 Indigenous children will kill themselves this year. I can tell you the stories of 5,000 to 20,000 murdered, missing Indigenous women in Canada and the United States, and I can tell you the story of my father, Mitchell Adams, a Mohawk construction worker, who came to Niagara Falls in the 1950s to find work to support his family, a man who worked hard to help to build the city. He worked on the Bell Aerospace, Aerospace Project, the Power Vista, Hooker Chemicals, and Niagara Falls Urban Renewal Projects, that include the Convention Center and the Hilton Hotel, then the Niagara Falls Sewage Treatment Plant, where 50 years ago, on May 17th, 1974, he was the first man killed on that job. You wouldn't know that because there's no memorial to remember my father, and I cannot tell these stories of Indigenous people if that building is torn down. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council members and members of the public. My name is Ryan Alteri, and I'm an attorney with the law firm of Harder, Seacrest, and Emery, and I'm here to speak on behalf of NFR Turtle LLC concerning the proposed recommendation by the Niagara Falls Historic Preservation Commission to the City Council to designate its property located at 25 Rainbow Boulevard an historical landmark. In addition to my brief comments here, I respectfully refer the council members and the public to NFR's written submission, which I understand has been made part of the record of this meeting. I want to take a moment to first acknowledge NFR's sincere understanding of how important the Turtle is to some members of the public, many of which I assume will be speaking and have spoke in support of the Turtle tonight. NFR understands your passion, personal memories, and desire to participate in local government. On a personal note, I've been particularly impressed by the young members of the public that have had the courage to speak to this council and the Historic Preservation Commission before that. It is important to be principled and participate. But the fact is, despite what I am sure are sincere and genuine intentions, this council is bound by the applicable New York and federal laws and regulations to vote against tonight's resolution. It is the law that binds this council when it's making its determination. While important input, this council is not bound by public sentiment. A determination by the council to designate the Turtle an historical landmark would be without a legal basis. First, the Turtle's designation as an historical landmark is eight years premature at minimum. According to the New York Parts Recreation and Historic Preservation Law, state regulations, even assuming a property has achieved significance, it is ineligible to be considered an historical landmark if it is less than 50 years old. A property less than 50 years old will only be considered for historical landmark designation if it is deemed exceptionally important, that's a legal standard. The Turtle, completed in 1981, is fewer than 43 years old, almost eight years short of the 50-year requirement. The commission's recommendation package to the council demonstrates the Turtle's lack of exceptionally important significance, thus failing to satisfy that exception. Rather, the facts bear, which are set forth more fully in our written submission, that the Turtle's limited operations between 1981 and 1985, as the Native American Center for Living Arts, were marred by immediate financial struggles and a lack of visitor's support and enthusiasm. Second, the various city departments do not support the Turtle's historical landmark designation. Here, while it is unclear whether the commission followed this note, the notice requirement, the Assessors Department, Engineering Department, Community Development, Community Development Department, Planning Board, and Law Department submitted comments that were made part of the recommendation package, which demonstrate an overwhelming lack of support for the proposed historical landmark designation. The City Department comments are set forth more fully within our written submission and the commission's recommendation packet. Third, significant questions remain concerning the composition of the Historical Preservation Commission and whether they acted with the requisite authority when making its recommendation to this council. Fond memories and public support statements, while genuine, I am sure, do not constitute a basis in law to designate an otherwise ineligible building as an historical landmark. That would be against this City Council's precedent as well. For purposes of tonight's vote, the council must understand that the Turtle is not a historical landmark in accordance with the applicable law. As such, any decision to the contrary would be without legal merit or basis. To close, NFR remains open and willing to discuss the future of this building with interested members of the public, and will listen to anyone with a bona fide purchase offer or alternative proposal, which, to be clear, NFR has not received a single one of since it purchased the Turtle nearly 30 years ago. NFR respectfully requests that this council vote no to the proposed historical landmark designation of the Turtle. Thank you for your time and consideration tonight.
Our next speaker is Kalen Woodfine.
Hello. I'm Colin Woodfine. I'm a resident of this city, live on 72nd Street in the LaSalle area. I'm a proud laborer of Laborers Local 91. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Turtle. Not only is the Native American culture a big part of this community, no matter which way you turn, anywhere in this community, Tonawanda, Salamanca, Cataragos, Chautauqua, Skajakwada, all of these places around here all have one thing in common, Native American backgrounds. Each one of them belonging to a name of either a tribe or a chief that was belonged to this area that belonged to the Iroquois Nation. I'm not only speaking on behalf of saving the Turtle from a, from a aspect of the people, but I'm also speaking on an infrastructure basis. If this council is worried about who is going to work on this project, where it is, who's going to man it, we have, my local, has the implications to set the same precedents that were in place when this city undertook the casino 20 years ago, to make sure that this building is not only preserved for the Native American people, but it will be preserved by the Native American people, implementing, implementing a fact that that, that that job will be manned 51% majority by Native Americans, to make sure that they have a say-so in the preservation of their people and of their place in this city. Thank you very much. Please do the right thing and give the people back what they deserve.
Our next speaker, Pete Hill. Pete?
Have to move this up a little bit. And is this being recorded too? Sorry about that. Good evening, honorable members of the Niagara Falls City Council and the public here. Greetings, my name is Pete Hill. I'm a member of the, of the Keweenaw Nation, and I live at Tony Chapel Road in Kenmore, New York. I want to thank the Niagara Falls, first, I'm not an attorney or a lawyer, and what I, what I do know is the concept known as the doctrine of discovery, and using laws that were created that were based on that doctrine from the 15th century is really not an appropriate thing to do, to talk about when we talk about the Turtle, but that's, I'm not here to talk about that doctrine of discovery, but it definitely relates to here. What I am talking about is the support of the Turtle, and I want to thank the Niagara Falls City Council for considering granting the building commonly referred to as the Turtle as, with the status of a historic landmark. I myself was born here in Niagara Falls, New York, and throughout my life, being from here has always been a great source of pride, being born a very short distance from one of the natural wonders of the world. My pride in being born here in Niagara Falls was also greatly enhanced when the Turtle opened up. I knew many family members and friends who worked at the Turtle, conducted hundreds of events featuring Native cultures, and welcomed, welcomed people from all over the world who wanted to learn about all Indigenous people of North America. I wholeheartedly support granting the Turtle with historic landmark status, not only for the representation of Native people and our cultures, but also to share the many positive life lessons that come from Native people and Native cultures, but for all peoples of the world. One of these concepts is the idea of all our relations. This phrase, as I understand it, speaks to the importance of recognizing that we are all connected, that we are all part of our human family, and that no matter where we are, where, no matter where our ancestors come from, no matter who we are, we can all be proud of our ancestry and treat each other as sisters and brothers, as we all are part of our human family. Another concept from many Native cultures is the idea of the seventh generation, that we should think when we make decisions of not only ourselves and what the consequences are going to be today, tomorrow, even a year from now, but to think of the seven generations out. When we think of that, in that perspective, it gives us a responsibility not only to think about what's happened today, but what, how the, how the consequences of your decision tonight will impact people throughout the world in future generations and going forward. You have an opportunity to return my home, my birthplace, as an Indigenous wonder of the world. Within all the negativity and violence we see in this country and throughout the world today, we, and I mean all of us, will benefit from your decision to grant historic landmark status to the Turtle building and the idea of promoting peace, pride, love, respect, and understanding for all our relations. Thank you.
Next speaker is Michael Martin.
Sagal, Yowai Scano. I give greeting and thanks for your help and well-being. Speaking of which, I want to thank the young lady here for wiping the microphones and keeping us all safe here tonight. I am Michael Martin. I'm Executive Director of Native American Community Services of Erie Niagara Counties. I'm an Anadaga of the Beaver Clan and a Niagara County resident. We were founded in 1975 and now provide services across 17 counties of upstate New York, including an office here in Niagara Falls, our second lotus, our second oldest office. I come before you today to express both my individual and my organization's support for preserving the iconic Turtle as part of the fabric of Niagara Falls. I come before you, but I don't stand here alone. I come with my ancestors and with those that came before us, including community stalwarts such as Linda Yellow, who actually gave me this bolo tie many years ago and who, who's no longer with us, but she gave her, her lifetime helping residents in Niagara Falls and whose family was actually involved with the operation of the former Native American Center for Living Arts. She was a founding member of our organization's Council of Elders, and until her death, she cared deeply and passionately about this community and those that live here. I'm also here with Noreen Kim Hill, who worked for decades with Native students of the Niagara Falls School District, all the way up to her passing, and who cared deeply about this city and its residents. And of course, I stand here with countless others here tonight, and even more that couldn't be here with us. I'm here in support of preserving the building known as the Turtle because our organization would be committed to helping in any way we can to once again make the building an asset for the city of Niagara Falls, the Native community, and truly with some of the ideas that have been put together, a gift that would be to the world and future generations. There is great interest in its reuse. We are actively working collectively to reimagine and reawaken the Turtle, but if the building gets destroyed, it would be loss, a loss felt by many and a glorious opportunity lost forever. No idea can move forward until NFR provides a solid asking price that's realistic or even be, be considered, they could even donate if they want to be part of the positive solutions this city desperately deserves, and also could be part of the healing and the hope for a community that's so in desperate need of that, but not just our Native community, the non-Native community that are residents here as well. We toured the building in 2016, and when we asked what the price was, we were just told where is our money coming from? And we, we asked even more recently, and we were told it's not in sale, but would only consider serious proposals or offers. And we're willing to work in good faith with anyone that wants to see this building reused and put back into becoming an asset for this community and for future generations. But any potential acquisition cost obviously is a starting point to more serious deliberations on costs, cost of renovation, and operating costs going forward. But we are actively working on that with the information that we have. It would be a great lift for the cultural heritage corridor that Niagara Falls has been developing, and the natural wonder of the world that this side of the falls has honored more differently than the other side of the falls that this city competes with for dollars into this economy. Some who worked at the Turtle and, and served on their board have gone on to become chiefs, faithkeepers, established knowledge holders, renowned artists, and esteemed professionals. Generations of community members, visitor, and visitors, Native and non-Native alike, fondly remember their experiences within it. Even passersby's today are curious to see what is inside it. We still believe it can be both an attraction to bring people together and a place to share and educate about our common humanity. You started with that as an opening statement about the world we live in today, and it's even needed even more so that this, that we can build this place that can be a confluence of ideas and perspectives and sharing to find a better future for us all going forward. Even to this day, it would be, be difficult to find another structure of its scale and design. Its unique, its uniqueness should be valued as such. Niagara Falls doesn't need another empty lot or ordinary-looking hotel. It needs attractions to draw people to the city, to prolong their stay, to fill those hotels that are already here. Their residents need a place that they can not only benefit from but be proud of. Together, we have an opportunity to not only preserve history, but to reawaken a building that we have an enormous, that could have an enormous transformational impact and create new memories for generations to come. I want to thank you for your service on this council, and I know being at the last meeting, you deal with a lot of different issues, but despite the assertion that it's not old enough, but to be designated as a historic landmark, if it is, if this building is at risk of being torn down and lost forever, I do feel you have a responsibility as the vested stewards of the best interest for this community to do what you feel is necessary to protect one of its greatest assets. I, Yowai, thank you for your time and service.
Next speaker is Mr. Ken Hamilton. Ken Hamilton.
Ken Hamilton, 1719th Street here in Niagara Falls, New York. We're here talking about a Turtle and about the preservation of, of our fine Native Americans heritages here, and I think that we're all hypocritical in so doing it. I believe that the Turtle is private property, and I think that these people have put together great, great potential for saving it if the two sides can come together. I've learned a lot just by being in the back of this room this afternoon, or this evening, rather, and talking to some great people. I love my Native American friends. I go to your field days. I support you 100% in most things. There is just one thing that I just have a difficult time with, and one of these things is with the city itself, and that we think that we have an opportunity to dictate to other people exactly what they should do with their properties. We're having that issue with this, this event center that we're supposed to be taking a look at, and it's just not fair. But on the other hand, every opportunity should be taken in order to make sure that everyone has an equal voice and that these things can be worked out amongst the parties themselves. The hypocrisy of all of this is not with the Native Americans that are here behind me, it is with the city councils now and before us, and that while we're talking about preserving the Turtle, which is concrete and steel, at Hyde Park, we have a monument that we dedicate to the veterans who have been honorably served in the United States military. And that monument is made of granite, and so those monuments will be there for 1,000, 2,000 years, as we will never be able to see the end of those things in our lifetime. One of those monuments is dedicated to a fellow named Sergeant Frederick Toy. He received the Medal of Honor at the Little Big Horn for shooting Indians in the back as they were running away. As we're discussing the concrete here, we relish the monuments that we have there for someone who shot Indian women, Indian braves who were running away, and we made him a hero. That monument need to be removed. That will be there long after the Turtle falls into dust. And so how can we, as a city, be standing here talking about the destiny of a building like the Turtle when we support monuments that dedicate themselves to the, to the murder of Native Americans? I am a Vietnam War veteran, and I was over there, and I watched bombs fall on the cities, killing people. As a young man, I was very proud of the fact of what we were doing because we were winning a war, what I thought was for freedom. And as I grew older, I come to find out that what we did was absolutely wrong, and that we were killing women and children, bombing cities and things like that. So when I look at Sergeant Toy and think about what we ourselves did in the United States of America, I'm very proud of the fact that I answered my country's call to go to war. I'm shamed that this is the war, the Vietnam War is the one that we had to fight it in. This seems to be a battle here over, over a building that, again, is made out of concrete and steel, and yet, we have done nothing to make that veterans monument commissioned, of which I was an original member, is to take that Sergeant Toy down, that, that monument to him down. And what I ask above anything else is that it is to the people in this room to discuss and to determine what the destiny of that building is. I think that we should table this matter until such time that you have had the opportunity to engage these folks with the people who actually and rightfully own that building. But then I say that you also need to take responsibility for that monument that exists at Hyde Park, where we're celebrating a murderer who indiscriminately killed Native American people, and we, as a city, are celebrating that. So if we have to get rid of our own hypocrisy first before we do anything for these fine people, then that's what we need to do. But what we really need to do is to encourage the opposing sides of this issue to come together in some, some way in which, some way in which that you folks yourselves could get involved into this discussion, because it's, you're the final arbiter of what's going to be happening here. So God bless, I can't wait to get to the next field today. I mean, they even introduced me a couple of times there because they know that I do know and understand the plight of my Native American friends. God bless you all, make the right decision, let's get rid of that monument.
Linda?
Hello, can you hear me? My name is Linda Grace Kobis. I was born and raised in Niagara Falls, and I currently live in Amherst. I'm here today to urge the council members to vote in favor of the landmark status for the Turtle. Its opening in September 1981 was a community-wide celebration. It was really the first significant and positive recognition of the Native peoples in this area. Niagara Falls is a world treasure. You, as council members, have stewardship for this city and for all the people from around the world who come to see it. Your stated aim has been to increase tourism, especially year-round visitors. Yet for too many years, city officials have taken a shortsighted and parochial attitude toward developing Niagara Falls into a world-class tourist destination. For too long, far beyond this council, city officials have ceded their power to out-of-town developers who only have their own interests at heart. In the 20-plus years that NFR has owned over 100 acres of land downtown, what have they done with it? Despite the millions of visitors- Niagara Falls is a world treasure. You, as council members, have stewardship for this city and for all the people from around the world who come to see it. Your stated aim has been to increase tourism, especially year-round visitors. Yet for too many years, city officials have taken a shortsighted and parochial attitude toward developing Niagara Falls into a world-class tourist destination. For too long, far beyond this council, city officials have ceded their power to out-of-town developers who only have their own interests at heart. In the 20-plus years that NFR has owned over 100 acres of land downtown, what have they done with it? Despite the millions of visitors who come here, they have left the Turtle Building in a disgraceful state for over 20 years. In all the other acreage, hundreds of acres downtown that they own, have they made any attempt to make it inviting? Have they planted a tree, made a garden, put in a bench for people to sit on? No. We have acres of eyesore downtown that turn people away from any desire to see more of the city. Is this the company that should decide the future of this important and iconic building? The Turtle represents the best of this city. It was forward-reaching in its vision. It finally acknowledged the presence of the first peoples here in a celebratory and wonderful way. It showcased the talents of artists and dancers. The building can come alive again. Thousands of people have contacted this council in support of the Turtle. Some people say that out-of-town voices don't matter, but these are people who care about Niagara Falls and want to see it grow and thrive and bring visitors here. How will you build a world-class tourism city if you don't want to hear from potential tourists? The travel writer Arthur Fromer has written, "Tourism does not go to a city that has lost its soul." And I add, "A city that destroys its own heritage, that lets out-of-town developers decide what's torn down and what's built, has definitely lost its soul." In downtown, the most evocative, the most inspiring building is the Turtle. The concept of the Turtle Building transcends its architecture. It speaks deeply about origins, beliefs and values. It makes you think about the deep past, where we have come from and where we are going. And most important, it remembers the first people who lived here. The Turtle represents our soul. Some people say that we supporters of the Turtle are too emotional. Yet being emotional proves you have a soul. The energy that drives this movement is the energy that can save Niagara Falls and turn it into a true tourist mecca. Because you cannot keep ripping down the places people care about, especially the young people, and expect to create a vibrant city that attracts tourists and also meets the needs of its citizen. The process of restoring the Turtle will bring positive benefits to the city. It will attract national attention as a shining light of reconciliation and renewal, and it showcases the talents of local builders. Do you know that the Skufari Construction Company, our own hometown company, built with the secret company in Buffalo, they built the magnificent dome of the Turtle's backs? Please don't forget all of the local talent that created the Turtle. Restoring it will show Niagara Falls is a city of vision, and there are jobs for people, for local workers in restoration. You members of council have a great responsibility. It will be a betrayal of your office not to listen to the people of this city and all the people who love Niagara Falls and care about its future. It would betray your office to ignore the recommendation of your own Historic Preservation Commission. Please have some courage. To put the wishes of an out-of-town developer who didn't even have the civic decency to improve hundreds of acres of downtown for over 20 years above the stated, yes, emotional wishes of the city, please don't do that. What do you want your legacy to be? Do you want to be known forever as the Tear It Down Council? One thing is certain. If you don't vote for landmark status and the building is torn down, that will also get national attention, and you will give this city a black eye it will never recover
Is Bernice Rattle?
Hi, everyone. My name is Bernice Rattle. I am born and raised here in Niagara Falls, right around the corner on Fourth and Cedar. I'm the Executive Director of Preservation Buffalo Niagara. And I'm sure you're going to hear a lot of comments and feelings and emotion today, and that is very well deserved. We need to save the Turtle. I want to talk specifically to the attorney, Ryan, who I think may have left. Ryan's comments. Yeah, you actually have a law. You are bound by law. You have a preservation law. And I sent you all a few emails about it, and I'm so sorry if it bothered you, but I need you to know that this preservation law is very important. The preservation law says that it has to be exceptionally important, and furthermore says it needs to meet one historic criteria. Well, the Turtle actually qualifies and meets four of the five criteria, making it exceptionally important as a local landmark. It really is an exceptional building. Across here in the city, across the state, across the country, there is nothing like the Turtle. I also want to emphasize that Preservation Buffalo Niagara, the Campaign for Greater Buffalo, the Preservation League of New York State, and your own commission all are supporting this. So we tell you, when we say it can be locally landmarked, it should be locally landmarked, we are the experts. We promise you, we're not lying to you. We're telling you that this is truly an important piece of your history. It's something very unusual and unique and romantic and beautiful, and it is worth to be saved. And then I also just wanted to tell you that there was a lawsuit, and we are not threatening a lawsuit by any means, but there was a lawsuit with the Campaign for Greater Buffalo and the City of Buffalo Common Council. When the City of Buffalo Common Council decided to say no to local landmarks, they went to New York State Supreme Court. They've said, "Wait, we have preservation law on paper," and they're not following it. And the Supreme Court came back and said, "No, you have to vote. You have a law." And the law says the preservation board is important and should be recognized and is a professional board. So I would really encourage you to look into that law. I promise you, I'm not standing here threatening in any way, but it is important for you to know that those laws do exist locally and also on the state to support this local landmark. And I really hope that you know, I will say, as a person growing up here, I think I can speak for everybody, this place is so special. It was special, and it can absolutely be special again.
Hello to the city council. I am Brandon Kennedy, the lead preservationist and architectural historian for Preservation Buffalo Niagara. I stand before you today to advocate for the landmark designation of the Turtle. This building is not just a structure. It is a silent storyteller of our collective history. It's a testament to the rich cultural tapestry of Niagara Falls, and it's a symbol of the city's potential for growth. I'd also like to set the record straight about something. The absence of a current plan should not be a barrier to landmarking. Landmark status is often the catalyst needed to attract investment and development. If we step back and take a look at the bigger picture, we can see this landmark is part of the plan. First, we landmark the Turtle, then we apply for the state and national registry, gaining access to historic tax credits in the process, which will make developing this financially feasible. And from there, we can find developers, private investors, we can facilitate a sale. In addition, the groups and folks that have made it here tonight to speak could come up with all the plans in the world. It won't mean anything as long as NFR continues to sit on this vacant property. NFR has had nearly 30 years to come up with a plan. I ask tonight, where is that plan? Now, what makes the Turtle truly unique is its intricate design, its architect, Dennis Sun Rhodes, and the reason why it was built. It stands as a rare form of zoomorphic architecture in the United States, and it's one of the few remaining examples of indigenous architecture in the Western New York region. It's masterpiece of design, it's a masterpiece of engineering, and it deserves recognition and respect. It's truly one of a kind. Dennis Sun Rhodes, the architect, he gained national reputation for designating buildings for indigenous nations across the country. Indigenous architects are seldom celebrated, and they are underrepresented in the design industry. According to the American Institute of Architects, as of 2021, only 419 of the 95,000 members in this architectural group identify as indigenous people. That's less than half of 1%. How could we deny the Turtle landmark status? Landmarking the Turtle Building will not only honor its past, it will secure a future for this architectural gem. It will also send a clear message that the Niagara Falls government values and respects the Haudenosaunee community, the people that have called this region home for millennia long before the birth of our country. It is crucial to emphasize the importance of strictly adhering to the established criteria during the council's decision-making process. Any deviations or the introduction of arbitrary standards or personal opinions could lead to legal repercussions. The state Supreme Court has already established a precedent with the cases involving two Frank Lloyd Wright-designed houses, the William Heath House and the Walter Davidson House. While Preservation Buffalo Niagara is not insinuating or suggesting a lawsuit, it is vital particularly for the new council members to understand the legal implications involved in their decision-making. The Turtle Building meets four out of five criteria for landmark eligibility under Section 1335 of the Niagara Falls Preservation Regulations. It only needs to meet one. The building is not just eligible, it is a prime candidate for landmark status. Moreover, the Turtle Building is a tribute to the Haudenosaunee people, the original inhabitants of our region, whose creation story inspired the building's design. The Turtle honors their legacy and their contributions to Niagara Falls and our nation. It serves as a cultural bridge between the native and non-native communities, fostering understanding and respect. Denying the Turtle landmark status and allowing its eventual demolition would be a grave insult and a profound loss to the Haudenosaunee people and their culture. Do not let the Turtle suffer the same fate as the Winter Garden, the Ice Rink, Old Falls Street. These were once iconic landmarks of the falls, but they were demolished or neglected in the name of progress or profit. They are now gone forever, and we can never get them back. We cannot afford to lose another piece of our city's soul. If you choose to ignore our collective plea, deny this application and allow the Turtle Building to be demolished, you will be remembered as the administration that neglected the Turtle, as the administration that lost an irreplaceable treasure. You'll be looked upon in the same light as the administrations before you that continue to be harshly criticized for their shortsighted and irresponsible decisions. You will be held accountable for your actions in the ballot, and history will not be kind to that legacy. Tonight, we have an important decision to make. I say we save the Turtle.
Our next speaker is Vivin Nandur.
Hello, council members. My name is Dr. Vivek Nandur. I'm the CEO and chief scientist of Lumia, a data science consultancy that quantifies social impact. I did my PhD at the University of Toronto in applied econometrics, which is a fancy way of saying valuing things with data. Needless to say, this will not be a moral, anecdotal, or emotional analysis. I objectively assessed whether there would be a social benefit to the Native American community using all sorts of data provided by indigenous communities. I objectively quantified the economic impacts to the cultural center, which can be divided into direct and indirect benefits. Direct benefits are ticket sales, gift shops, et cetera. Those I completely removed from this analysis. I only looked at indirect impacts, which are more downstream effects, things that are not immediately obvious but blow up to be really large numbers. For instance, a program that alleviates mental health for a community can actually save the community money by reducing demand on other social services and increasing productivity to this society. Specific to the Turtle context, the academic literature shows that indigenous areas with cultural centers have higher graduation rates, which of course impact lifetime earnings later on, lower rates of severe depression, lower rates of substance abuse, and suicide. Using econometric modeling for indigenous nations in the Niagara area, we determined that making the Turtle a cultural center will create $10 million per year in social benefits, which ripple from mental health alone. This translates, of course, into higher productivity for the community and higher incomes, which lead to higher taxes for Niagara Falls. And I want to say these are all underestimates because these are not quantifying social benefits such as education for the youth and all the tourists that might come through. And I want to say that I came into this with a completely open mind, and I'm the kind of person who calls balls and strikes as they see it, and this is just the objective truth of the situation. So therefore, I support a vote for yes on the landmark designation.
Our next speaker is Saladin Allah.
Good evening, council. First, I just want to thank everybody for being here. I think if you just look out into the audience, I don't remember the last time when we saw this sense of social equality and people advocating for a common cause. And I think one of the more recent examples of what we're striving to do here is our Niagara Falls Underground Railroad Heritage Center. I'm a director for community engagement at the Niagara Falls Underground Railroad Heritage Center, and I'm sure all of you have actually been there. It is in a customs house that was built in 1863. That building itself was on one of the seven sites to save in New York State, so it took about 300 people, community members, public officials, everyone coming together to save that actual building. And many people did not believe that it was possible. Many people didn't believe that. But through those efforts, we saved that building, and through adaptive reuse, we converted it into our Underground Railroad Heritage Center, right? Now, our Heritage Center is an experiential museum. It's a micro-museum. It's small. It's on the north end of this territory, and it's hard oftentimes for people to actually get there and to find the directions because it's not right in the center of everything. But just last month alone, we had thousands, thousands of students that came through those doors to learn about the history that we teach. And again, this is a micro-museum, and that's just February. Imagine a building that is four times that size in the center of our tourist district. Do we not believe that people would come through those doors to learn about the rich history and the culture of our people here? That is a critical part of our cultural heritage tourism in this city. A lot of times, many people have this idea of economic development as building a business over here or building a business over here. That's not economic development. We have to create corridors of development. And a part of that is being able to revitalize a lot of the cultural assets that we have within this community. That is the key to our economic development here. Our Niagara Falls Underground Railroad Heritage Center is just one part of that. I'm working with a team of experts and historians, and we are at this moment literally working with the design team to develop the site where the Cataract House stood across the street from the Turtle. Literally, right now, where we're creating a memorial to honor the people of African descent who were a part of the Underground Railroad, literally across the street. We were also a part of creating the content and the history that is in the new visitor center that is inside of the state parks. That's indigenous-centric. I literally wrote the content for the history of people of African descent in this city. I did it. And millions of people are going to come down there and see it every day. And I deliberately put content in there to honor the various different assets within our city, like our Niagara Falls Underground Railroad Heritage Center, to direct people into the city. So think about that asset in the state parks. Think about us being able to develop this memorial site that is right outside of the state parks, across the street from the Turtle. Think about developing the Turtle. Think about the public art. We have over two dozen murals that we've literally created along Main Street in the northern corridor. And our discovered Niagara Shuttle takes people not only along those areas where we see Oakwood Cemetery, which is another cultural asset, our murals, our Underground Railroad Heritage Center, and Fort Niagara. This is the free shuttle. And additionally, we offer free membership to every citizen in this city so we can make sure that there are no barriers for our citizens to have access to their history and their culture. We're doing this with a micro-museum, a micro-museum, so we know what we're talking about is possible. We know that it's possible. So as I stand before you, I'm here to support my indigenous family members and community members to save the Turtle. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tim Johnson.
Good evening. My name is Tim Johnson. I was
I was born in Niagara Falls, New York, raised in North Tonawanda, and have been a lifelong citizen of Six Nations of the Grand River within the Oguaho Wolf Clan of the Gannan Gahaga Mohawk Nation. On the essential question before this council tonight, the Niagara Falls Historic Preservation Commission got it right when it voted unanimously to recommend historic landmark status for the Native American Center for the Living Arts, the Turtle. I began my professional career, first volunteering, and then employed at the Native American Center for the Living Arts on the day the Turtle opened in May of 1981, and spent seven full years working there as media manager and creator and editor of the Turtle Quarterly Magazine. Working while surrounded by beauty, not only the artworks that hung on the walls and displayed in vitrines throughout the building, but enveloped within the curvature lines and forms of the building itself, created extraordinary feelings and memories. The experience I gained at the Turtle that ranged from exhibit development to publishing to public programming was extensive and put to full use when I became a senior executive at the Smithsonian Institution's National Museum of American Indian for eleven and a half years, ten of those years as Associate Director for Museum Programs overseeing exhibitions. As Chair of the National Museum of American Indians Exhibit Assessment Group, I directed the process that led to the approval of numerous critically acclaimed exhibitions, including the Great Inca Road: Engineering and Empire, that not only focused on Inca culture and history, but also the design of its architecture. On this point, I want to relate how important aesthetics are to the identification of masterworks of art and architecture. While evaluating exhibit proposals every month over those ten years, my team had constant conversations about whether certain indigenous artworks rose to the standards of fine art worthy of Smithsonian display. In any credible assessment of the Turtle Building based upon its intent, meaning, and design, the Turtle stands out as a masterwork of indigenous architecture, one that has had tremendous influence upon indigenous architects and communities for its zoomorphic style. But it can also be argued that it is one of the best examples of this type in North America. It would simply be uncouth and unconscionable for a city as glorious as Niagara Falls to relegate this fine work of art to the wrecking ball. There are, of course, numerous examples of historic buildings that have been restored to new glories when vision is combined with competence, capacity, and commitment to advance them even beyond their former acclaim. Frank Lloyd Wright's Martin House in Buffalo is but one well-known example in the area, but so too is the redevelopment of the Alexander Hamilton U.S. Custom House that actually became home to the New York City branch of the Smithsonian Institution's National Museum of the American Indian. Now then, early attempts at getting the Smithsonian Institution to carry the load of capitalizing the restoration of the Turtle were not viable because it was already very busy launching the National Museum of the American Indian. The Act to Establish the National Museum of the American Indian was passed in November 1989, eight years after the Turtle opened, and it was required to design, open, and operate three facilities, which it did. The New York City version of the museum opened first as the George Gustave High Center in October 1994, the Cultural Resources Center that stored its 1 million-plus artifacts, opened in February of 1999, and the museum on the National Mall opened in September 1994. A great deal of work was also required after these accomplishments. However, there emerged a time when I sat among a handful of senior executives at the National Museum of the American Indian when work to establish the Turtle as a Smithsonian affiliate could have begun, provided an organization could be identified to operate the facility and ultimately necessary security and climate controls put in place within the building. When this time arrived, I contacted Niagara Falls Redevelopment, but was summarily rebuffed. Time's up? Okay. Just wanted to say, having been born here... Okay.
Our next speaker is Amelia Jacob.
Hello, my name is Amelia Jacob. I belong to the Kewa Nation of the Turtle Clan, and I am a student at Niagara Falls High School and a member of the Native American Youth Club. I am here today, as I was before, to share my immense support to landmark the Turtle, which I still know, even in my adolescence, had an extreme impact on the indigenous cultural awareness of the city and the overall positive environment in which the Turtle used to be. When I first came here to speak on this topic, I spoke about how this structure has and will continue, if it remains standing, to impact my life despite me never even setting foot in the building. There have been questions as to why the native community has not put any effort or care into this building for the many years it has been sitting, and I must admit the fair reasoning in these questions. However, we are here now. The youth of the city, Native Americans, a new generation that is showing care and effort and that should not go unnoticed. Our culture is being erased as time goes on by society and sometimes by the natives themselves. I am a native who cares, and I would like to restore my culture in the city I've grown up in, not just for me, but for the future Native Americans in the city of Niagara Falls as well. Although preservation does not guarantee restoration, I believe that this request cannot have any negative impact on anyone. Letting the building waste away is not going to benefit anyone considering the tremendously noticeable unsightly exterior that it's become after accumulating vegetation, peeling paint, and deterioration. Enabling the landmark will most likely cause the building to be more carefully kept at the very least and keep a small but significant part of our culture still alive in the city. It is more than just a building to us. It is a piece of each and every native standing in front of you today and a physical reminder of our greatest moments and our weakest struggles as indigenous peoples in a city where we practically become invisible. The building will inevitably be torn down without the implication of the landmark status, which is a waste considering the time and effort it most likely took those people to build this structure from the ground up. Each individual artifact intricately placed, each piece of artwork that someone dedicated so much time to create, each slab of concrete placed to reduce just the foundation of what would someday be turned into the magnificent architectural beauty the building was in its youth. And more than that, people my age in this city do not have memories of this building and its livelihood. But if the building did not exist, I would have very little connection to my culture in the city at all. The building itself is not the subject in which we are trying to preserve and protect, but it is our culture and recognition. As an indigenous teenager who has intention to raise my own family in or around Niagara Falls and on behalf of other native children with this mindset and future generations of Niagara County Americans, I strongly suggest and support the landmarking of the Turtle to better our community. Thank you.
It's Kobe Richard.
Kobe Richard. Hello, my name is Kobe Rickard. I am a resident of Niagara Falls and a student at Niagara Falls High School, part of the Niagara Falls Youth Club. I'm of the Tusker Nation Turtle Clan, and I feel the need to speak again on behalf of saving the Turtle and giving it landmark status because the destruction of this building, which has been a significant site for, well, not destruction, but you know, non-preservation, which can lead to destruction, which has been a significant site for many native communities, would further perpetuate the historical pattern of cultural genocide faced by indigenous communities. As I have stated before to this council, the Turtle in its beginning time served as a cultural connection for natives in the city of Niagara Falls and natives from the surrounding reservations in this area. The destruction of the Turtle would not only erase indigenous history, but also contribute to the challenge that many native communities face in preserving their cultural traditions and history. This act would further diminish native culture in Niagara Falls and highlight the erasure that continues to taunt many native communities. Personally, as a young Native American myself who did not grow up on a reservation or get taught very much to me about my culture, the Turtle can serve as a tangible object that shows a connection to my culture that I have not found elsewhere in the city of Niagara Falls. If the Turtle would be destroyed, this connection would be lost forever to myself and future generations to come. We have the chance to bring that beacon of hope, culture, tradition, and history back to life if we just put in the effort and support the landmarking designation to happen for that, for an amazing building like the Turtle. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Madeline Jacob.
Hello, I'm Madeline Jacob. I am part of the Native American Youth Club, and I am also a part of the Kewa Nation Turtle Clan. Landmarking the Turtle would be of extremely significant value, not just to me, but youth all around the world. Sorry, I'm nervous. Thousands of people worldwide used to go to the Turtle, and then it was taken from us. The Turtle was not only for education, but for fun, and you took it from us, like taking candy from a baby. But we're not babies. And that's why we stand here today to tell you that we have a voice, and we will use them. We will use them until you listen. We are ignored, but not anymore. People don't come to Niagara Falls to have fun at a hotel and take pictures of a hotel. Instead, you have the power to give everyone in the city and beyond our borders to come and take pictures and interact with and make money in the process. Having a cultural institution would spur our local economy, making our city better than it is today. Even though you and many adults don't listen, we are people, we are Native Americans. We refuse to be ignored any longer. A reawakened Turtle would afford people the opportunity to learn about my cultural identity. People coming to the Turtle would get to experience the first people to live here at Niagara Falls through native art, dance, food, and language. I know those who oppose or are hesitant about this landmark status believe it won't be beneficial, but could you seriously look in everyone's eyes and tell them a hotel would be a better choice? In closing, I am asking, as the future of the city, to stop ignoring us young people and consider landmarking the Turtle. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Amber Remondo.
Hi, I'm Amber. I'm a native hoop dancer. My dad's Mohawk from Six Nations. So when the building was built in 1980, there was still a lot of racism, and residential schools were still open. People were scared to talk about our culture, so of course it wouldn't financially do well, and of course, people weren't going to go there. Residential schools didn't close until 1997, the very year I was born. And up until 66 years ago, native babies were being stolen and sold for $10 each. I grew up disconnected from my culture, and I want to say as one of those people who would benefit from the Turtle, and I believe our large native population in Niagara Falls would benefit from healing at the Turtle Building. I've been through probably anything somebody could have happened to them, and through the culture, I've healed from that. I've been beaten and dragged around my entire life, and it's because of the culture that I'm standing here today. I didn't want to be here anymore, and instead of doing something about that, I turned and started learning. And now here I'm still standing today. I quit drinking, I quit smoking, and I'm a better person now because of our culture and because of who we are. And environmentally, too. Our culture is a way of life, and it's a way of the land, and that's something that concerns everybody, is how to better work with our Mother Earth as we continually destroy it every single day. Everybody, not just natives, can benefit from this. I think that's pretty good.
Our next speaker is Carl Skopinski.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak on this important topic. My name is Carl Skopinski, and I reside in Williamsville. I am here to speak on behalf of the Turtle Landmarking Application. Folks need to look at this building not only as a Native American-only center, but a building that will house cultural heritage programming to expand people's interest in coming to Niagara Falls. The 2018 Niagara Global Tourism Institute report stated that hotel occupancy was as low as 43% during off-season months. It's even worse for Niagara County. That's not a solution for people trying to make a living in Niagara Falls. Folks cannot live on seasonal work and cannot get ahead. The city's input to the county's Niagara Communities Comprehensive Plan 2030 states, "While tourism is increasingly seen as an important economic driver for the city, the current visitation numbers indicate a profound inability to capture a significant portion of an otherwise strong market. The lack of new or upgraded attractions presents a weak market case." And this is from the city. These factors, they also stated that these factors, coupled with the existing poor quality appearance and physical condition of the tourist areas in Niagara Falls, must be addressed in advance to advance the tourism industry and to provide the necessary growth which supports growth in other commercial and residential sectors. Niagara University has a program in the College of Hospitality, Sports, and Tourism Management. Our region has a problem with the lack of places to train, intern, and employ students. They go elsewhere to develop their professional careers. An affiliation with Niagara University would help both the tourism management program and the center. Cultural tourism is big business. Niagara Falls needs to get more of that pie. Post-pandemic travel and heritage tourism are on the rise. We have cultural assets that rival or exceed other communities. Many are in play. Others linger and provide no value to the community. A shuttered Turtle does nothing for the city and its residents. It sits front and center, telling the world, "No one cares." I'm sure you have looked at it yourself and have not been happy with its look or care since the owner acquired it. A landmarked Turtle would be the first step in creating a new and vibrant cultural center for residents, visitors, and students, all adding to the economy of Niagara Falls and the region. It would help preserve the building and ensure it is maintained until details and programming can be worked out. Those involved in this effort to reawaken the Turtle have a team of past and present-current cultural leaders and executive directors as part of the team, and specialists with economic analysis backgrounds have joined to help. We plan to continue to reach out to other professionals in the universities as we develop plans for reuse and to build current competencies. This past Monday, the Friends of the Turtle hosted a Reawakening the Turtle Forum. Over 50 residents were in attendance. No other opportunity that I've heard in the city in the last year and a half, two years, has ever had a public forum that I can think of. So we're doing our part. Channel 2 did a story on the Friends of the Turtle meeting at the NAC. This statement from the owner was presented in that piece. Quote, "If a building so wrong in so many ways is landmarked for such the wrong reasons, it's the taxpayers of Niagara Falls who ultimately suffer." They must be joking. If it was wrong in so many ways, then why did they buy it in the first place? Taxpayers are suffering today because it is not helping the economy. Why did the owners work to reopen it in 2000 as a Native American Cultural Center? As Tim mentioned, the owner... As Tim mentioned, the owner is a businessman, in business to make a profit. They must, they must have crunched the numbers back then. If they thought it was a good idea in 2000, it would be a better idea in 2024. Imagine a Smithsonian-affiliated cultural center in Niagara Falls with Smithsonian-affiliated marketing. Our vision is not to burden the city or the residents, but to add to its vitality. We are not looking for the city to buy or operate it. We are trying to ensure the owner does, does not harm the building further and to get the city to ensure that, that it has, it's maintained for future use. The, the owners after all have a sign on the building that says, "For leasing and community development." Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lawrence Blaber. Lawrence Blaber?
Lawrence Blaber, resident of 38th Street in Niagara Falls, but I'm also a graduate of Niagara University with a degree in history and an associate in sociology, and also a local businessman. I say those last three things because they kind of intersect my whole point. If you study the history of Niagara Falls and quite frankly, its downfall, it's happened bit by bit with bad decisions, banking on manufacturing as tourism took off and the other side of the border did that. And in trying to get back to that, I've seen continuous attempts at home runs and we're, we're going to try something big, we're going to do this water slide, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. And it always struggles because you can't fall as a city over 20 years and then try to get back with one big thing. It's got to be small ball, singles, doubles, so you need smaller attractions so you can overall, over time, over 10, 15 years, say, yes, we've got 15, 20 things to do in the city. And that is where I think this is the issue, and this is why I support the Turtle. I mean, the Turtle Center could be used for arts and cultural programs, it's a huge asset for kids, we, our school just in city, you know, provides culturally endless relevant knowledge and, and opportunities for the future. And we have to think about that because all this grabbing what's quick and the hand in front of our faces left us with worse futures for our kids because there's less to do, there's less going on, there's less opportunity because we bank on something. And speaking of banking on stuff, NFR is literally like a winless football team. If, if, if the Bills hired a coach that was winless, how would you react? They're like, oh, and what, 30 acres, I don't know how many acres they haven't built, they haven't done anything with, and they're trying to say that they're going to do something with this Turtle Land, and they're not. And this is where the businessman in me comes in. What they've done is they've got a buyer, and what they're doing, what they've done is speculating. When people heard that there was a movement to get the kids off of Devoe into Main Street, I got calls from buyers, let's buy some things in Main Street. That thing kicks off, they're going to pay me a ton for buildings in Main Street. That's how speculators move. That's what NFR has done, and they're trying to play the need for the Turtle by the indigenous people against buyers. And what they're going to do is trying to squeeze this thing into as much as they can. And, and that's why they're fighting not for, to, for it to not get the landmark status because if it gets the landmark status, it's going to be harder to sell, it's going to be harder to move, and then they're going to have to drop their price, and they're not going to make as much money. This is just me trying to, there's a lot of emotion attached to this, and I fully support the emotion, but sometimes we have to separate it and look at logic and money. That's what's happening, and that's what they're asking you to do, is help them keep their price high so they can make as much money as possible. You know, and the finally, somebody's brought up native interests globally, it is happening. If you look at and hear, we've moved as a society from calling native tribes what the other tribes called them to what they called themselves, from Escobos to Inuit. You go globally, in sports events in Australia, they have a Welcome to Country where the Aborigines explain where you're standing, what game, the game that you're watching, what happened on this ground. In New Zealand, they do the native people's dance before every sporting event. Okay, so there's a move to finally recognize the indigenous people and blend in their history with our modern world and create this new thing. And I think it would benefit the city to move forward in that direction because let's just try and get some runners on base, let's give people a couple more things. If you just walk across and see the opposition, they've got a million things to do, and I don't know what we, we've got less and less to do. Let's get, let's get, let's get a single, and then we'll build from there. All right?
My name is Elizabeth Lamoy. I'm a resident of this city. I'm standing here as a Niagara Falls Historic Preservation Society in support of you granting landmark status for the building known as the Turtle. This building is such a significant history. It's an architectural wonder designed by a member of the indigenous community that it represents, sits as, and is sacred to this population. That, and it, it's a museum, a ceremonial hall, a gallery that holds indigenous tradition deep within its walls. Excuse me. In spite that it's closed, people still travel to see it. I think the city has missed its opportunity so far in reaping any financial return from it. So please do not miss the opportunity again. Vote to landmark the Turtle and let this structure be reawakened and be the sacred site that it needs to be.
Our next speaker is Ally DeGahn. Ally?
My name is Ally Swunger DeGahn, and I'm the Director of the Niagara Falls Underground Railroad Heritage Center. I also serve as the Director of Public Art for the Niagara Falls National Heritage Area that is responsible for the Discover Niagara Shuttle, among many other art projects. I'm also the co-president of the Cultural Alliance of Niagara and the President of the Underground Railroad Consortium of New York State. I list that off because I'm going to speak a little bit about cultural institutions, cultural leaders, and what culturals can do for a city, for an area. My colleague Sally Dean spoke a little bit about the Niagara Falls Underground Railroad Heritage Center just a little bit ago, and I want to speak on that too because I don't think it can be spoken about enough. The Heritage Center opened in 2018 after a long time of advocacy efforts to bring it to fruition. Many people in this room were a part of those efforts and still are today as well in maintaining it and operating it and breathing more life into the future of what the organization and the building will be. It's housed in the 1863 U.S. Customs House, and the 1863 U.S. Customs House was in danger of being demolished. It was on the seven to save list. And being able to save that building, preserve it, and go through an adaptive reuse, we are able to be there today. And I share this because it relates directly to the Turtle and the plans and the landmark status that we're talking about here tonight. There is so much opportunity with the Turtle, and you've heard from many of us tonight and previous occasions as well through correspondence, reports, emails, and also the previous city council meetings. I know that many of you have come recently to the Heritage Center, including Chairperson Tor that we were a part of with you last week, and Councilmember Miles and Councilmember Archie, it was great to see you on Friday at our Black History Month celebration at the Heritage Center. I say that because it's always so great to see our community out at our events at the Heritage Center. It's a community space first and foremost. We're active. Again, as Sally Dean shared, thousands of students have come through in February alone, and our Black History Month Free Field Trip Program has actually continued all the way through March as well. And so, again, I give that background to say, we're doing that right now. We've done that work in the past to preserve a building, to create a cultural space, and continue every day to be a space for our residents and visitors alike to come to. The Heritage Center is in the north end of the city, it's not in the downtown area, and it still drives the traffic. People come specifically to come to the Heritage Center, as people will for the Turtle again as well. The Turtle, the opportunities with the Turtle are endless. We can imagine those possibilities, and we can make them a reality. The Heritage Center is an example of that. Also, so is the Niagara Arts and Cultural Center. That is a special, special place. All of the artists in that building who worked tirelessly to build their businesses, to build their artistic careers, and also the team there that builds exhibitions and has programming. The Niagara Arts and Cultural Center, as I'm sure you all know, was on the same path not too long ago, and community stepped up like we are here tonight to urge and demand that it be saved, that it be preserved, and it be transferred into what its new life will be within those spaces. And the Turtle is, has that opportunity as well. Within the walls of the Turtle, within the exterior, people will have the opportunity to learn about the incredible indigenous culture right here in our city of Niagara Falls. They will be able to connect from the Turtle to all the other stories across our city and across our region because our culturals are connected. And it's not only just by the Discover Niagara Shuttle, it's by word of mouth, it's through working with local businesses and partners throughout the area. We are building a cultural trail, and this, the Turtle is meant to be on that path together. And as you see before you here, all of these people speaking in favor of landmarking the Turtle, the landmark is the path forward. That path forward opens the doors for the next steps. We have visions, we have plans, we have all sorts of ideas and things we bring to the table. The community here who is speaking to you tonight are experts in their fields, their lived experiences, and their perspectives, and we're here to tell you with confidence that we can build and bring the Turtle into its new life here. And by doing that, we ask for your support to support the local landmark status as the pathway forward. It has been done, it can be done again. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mark Marino.
Members of the City Council, Mark Marino, I live in Niagara Falls. I guess I'm in the minority here because I'm going to register my opposition to the landmark status for the Turtle and ask that it be denied or at least tabled until there's more information about what can be done to rehab the building. Right now, I'm sure the council members have taken a look at that building as I have. It's in deplorable shape. The cost to rehab that building would probably be at least 50% of the cost of the building to begin with. That building was built with possibly a 40-year lifespan to begin with. It's slab concrete, most of it, other, you know, than, than with the dome on the roof. And that type of building, if it's given good maintenance throughout its lifetime, yeah, you'll get your 40, 50 years. But the way the building has, has deteriorated over the years, water has got into the reinforcing steel inside the concrete, there's chunks of slabs, pieces of concrete falling off the building. But I, I ask minimally that, that this be tabled until other avenues are pursued. With all due respect to the Native Americans and, and indigenous peoples and the, the young men and women who so eloquently spoke two weeks ago, get some proposals together first. There's a lot of wealthy individuals that have businesses on some of the reservations through cigarettes and gas pumps. I haven't heard of any of them even committing a dollar towards any of these rehab things. You know, I understand, pardon me? Well, anyway, I, I haven't heard of it or, or read of it that, that, you know, any of the entrepreneurs on, on the reservations who do have a lot of money and could put money forward towards this project. So minimally, I ask that it be tabled if, if not denied because I think granting landmark status to that building would be setting a dangerous precedence, only because look at what not too long ago happened on Niagara Street. There was a beautiful building, Art Deco building that started its life off, I believe, as a soda pop company. Beautiful Art Deco building, one of the last ones in Niagara Falls. What happened to it? Demolished. And, and, you know, thi- this type of, this type of designation for this Turtle Building that's nowhere's near even half the age that that Soda Pop Building was, I think is the wrong way to go. You'd be, you'd be setting a standard throughout the city for dilapidated buildings that don't deserve the, the status. Again, with all the native heritage put aside, I think there's other things, you know, that could be done, whether it be like through the Seneca, there's a piece of property there, maybe they could donate a quarter of their property to put something up and create a new building that's going to last another 50, 60 years. You won't have to go through a rehab situation and start a cultural, a cultural center there. But again, with all due respect to the Native Americans, I don't, didn't mean any disrespect with my comments, it's just my feelings from looking at the building and, and the kind of shape it's in, I just think it's, would be a bad idea for the Council to back it. Thank you.
Our next speaker.
Say this one, one more time, and one more time only. If anybody wants to speak their opinion, can say so at this podium. If, if we do not get respect for the people at this podium, we're going to stop the hearings. We have a right to do that, and if we have to clear the House to get our votes, we'll do that. I hope that's understood.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jennifer Rice.
Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak. I'm a little nervous, so I will try my best. My name is Jennifer Rice. I was born in Niagara Falls, and I love this city. My father is Tuscarora Deer Clan. And back in my day, Indian kids were not seen, we were not visible. So the opportunity for me as a 12-year-old to go into the Turtle was phenomenal. I moved to New York City, lived there for many, many, many years, and have returned, and I often think of this building. What was very visionary, I think, about this building is at the time Niagara Falls decided to build it, which was phenomenal, and I think the city should own that. The building is not just a building because anywhere where Indian people gather and community comes together, that's community, but it's not community just for Indian people, it's community for all of those folks that live here and will visit here. And we're talking about an international, international guests. We are on ancestral land, and that is so rich. Folks here previous to me have spoken so beautifully about the meaning of what it means to have this building intact, but on a personal level for me, it's, it's deeper. I have deep roots in Niagara Falls, not only on the Indian side, but also on my mother's side, and I love this city. Indian people now, we're culturally... Indian people now, we're culturally, we're seen now. You're going to see more of us in theater, we're in film, where, you know, you hear more about us as artists. And that is something that is bankable. Someone earlier said about the cultural relevance, relevance of having this building and what that can bring to the city. I think sometimes we can tend in Western New York to not really value what we have in our backyard. And this is a phenomenal architectural feat by a Native man. And nowhere in the country do you have this. It's right there at the Falls. I think the city should take ownership of that, because what the city did back then was pretty beautiful. And it was pretty huge for Indian people. Again, thank you so much for the opportunity to come up here, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Our next speaker is... I'm sorry. I'm unable to call it. I believe this is a Connor.
Good evening. My name is Connor Ground. I am Bear Clan, and I'm Mohawk from Six Nations. I'm from my mother and my father's descent. My family's very big, and we're very Native. And we love the small things we have. We're very sentimental. And that building holds a lot of value, not only, yeah, because it's old or really, but whatever, but the point is that it has soul in it. And that soul is because it was built by Native, for Native, and blah, blah, blah. But the point is that it has something in it that's very valuable. And while I'm a Cineanian, and I'm very young, I'm low-key naive and pretty dumb, but that's not really the point, is connecting, but rather the point of that building can be valued for high amounts. Not by because of the money it may bring in, but rather because of like, just what it can offer to the kids and Native Americans that were once lost many back in the day. My grandfather is Mohawk, and he's from Canada. And he has, he lost many of his family to those camps over there, that they didn't like who he was, they didn't like his dancing, his hair, all these things that were shunned for no reason, just because that made us happy, we liked it, because we were not a white man, or we weren't as perfect. And that building holds great weight, because it can be valued at some point, if we can do something about it now, by the offer of the building, or how, it can't be landmark or whatever, but the point really is that this building can be so much, so much more for the Falls also, because the Falls, in the last 50 years, definitely fell off. We all can really admit that. It's not what it once used to be, not as pretty, not that golden boy, that golden city. But the thing about it is, it is ancestral land, and it holds much of value to what it once was. And this building could be beautiful if it was not thrown away, destroyed, because it holds not only memories, but they'd have the natives that would go there for ceremonies, the art that was very beautiful there, a lot of family who, like, grew up there, and they learned many things. And let me be honest, that Turtle building, whenever I go to the Falls, I just really go up to it to see the two eyeballs when I walk near it. And it's, those eyeballs are pretty cool, man, I'm going to be honest. And that's probably the main reason, you know, but like, it has soul. Don't throw that away. That's no different than, like, taking down any Frank's house or some other historical figure that held value because they were shunned. And who wants to be the owner of like, oh, hey, I destroyed this building because I wanted the place a fantastic hotel? No one wants to do that. Come on. I mean, like, the point of value, like, yeah, there's just like, it has something. And we don't, just throwing that away is just so disrespectful. It's so hurtful to the children, the memories, the heritage, and the many people that were just gone. It only just has soul, but it has like, something in it that is pretty, you know? I can't be too specific, but thank you for hearing me out. Thank you very much.
Speaker is Jessica Fournette. Jessica?
All right. Hi, I'm Jessica Fournette. You got it this time. I'm from the Kuga Nation, Bear Clan, and I'm an English teacher at Niagara Falls High School. And I advise an amazing group of young people in the Native American Youth Club. I come from a very long line of strong, determined, and resilient Native women who have shown me the importance of being true to myself, the Creator, and those that I love. So I decided to be true to myself tonight. I did not actually plan to come up here, because I've already been up here. I've spoken to you all once already, and once before, about the landmarking of the Turtle. However, as I held club today after school, I heard my students talking amongst themselves, calling us over, myself, Mrs. Fortino Savage, and their peers, and then they finally, and that they said that they finally feel like they have a... And they said that they finally feel like they have a voice and a chance to be heard, that they have something to stand for that makes them feel seen and not stereotyped. And I'm guilty of stereotyping them, believe me, I'm a teacher. But we stereotype them as stupid kids, lazy, you know, they're careless, they only love their phone. But when I read their remarks, that they wrote on their own time, "I did not make them, it's not a project, it's not a grade, it's nothing for graduation, it's them." It brought me to tears with the words that they had, and they inspired me. I learned from them. I was hearing their pride, their passion, their anger, their frustration, and also their love coming through the words that they have. I know many here right now, sitting in the audience, and then some of you in front of me, believe that landmarking the Turtle is just for show, or for someone's gain, or for clout, as the kids say, or some other asinine reason, which is not a curse word that I learned that some people thought is a curse word. That is not a curse word. Look, Google it. But I'm here to tell you that it's so much more. This is a movement for these young people, and I don't want you to give up on them. And they're not going to give up. This is a movement that they know matters not just for them, but for the future generations. And I know people keep saying, oh, it's just a building, it's been sitting there for 20 years, doing nothing, no one cares about it, knock it down, move it, who cares, blah, blah, blah. But it's not just a building. And I strongly believe that the Creator made this moment happen, not for me, not for many older adults in this room, but for them. Those young Native kids and their allies, because my club is inclusive, it is Native, it is non-Native, everyone is welcome. They are standing up, and they are making their voice heard. They're finding the pride that I never felt, living in this city as a city Indian, as a young person. And I'm here for that. I'm here for them. You can tell me, and they have tried, they can tell me that I can take my memories I have of the Turtle and be happy that, with what I have, because I don't have a plan that guarantees the city millions of dollars in revenue. But what about the kids? They don't have those positive memories of Niagara Falls. I do, when it was thriving. They don't. They see it as broken down, get the hell out of here. And honestly, what revenue has NFR brought to you all with the Turtle in 20-plus years? I ask that you give this movement, this moment, to the future generations. Give them a chance. Give them something they can tell their own grandchildren about that they fought for, for their culture, their people, their city. And I can tell you this, they aren't going away, and now they know their true power.
Our next speaker is Josiah Jackson. Josiah?
Hello, everybody. Good evening. My name is Josiah Jackson Hackett. I'm a visitor experience specialist at the Underground Railroad Heritage Center, and I'm also a youth and advocacy specialist there. But I don't stand here today as those titles. I actually stand here from an anecdotal perspective. So you heard my colleagues, they talked about the importance of historical preservation. You even heard the young man earlier who talked about the benefits of historical preservation and what something like this could do for the Native American community. And I stand here as proof in the pudding, for lack of better words. We, what my colleagues didn't touch on is that we have a museum ambassador program at our Heritage Center that allows youth in our community and anybody in our community to get basically a stepping stone for museum studies. And as a young black girl that grew up in poverty in the city, like many people's stories in this city, that grew up, that was a product of teen parents, that was a product, that was almost a product of that environment, I stand here as proof that historical preservation has completely changed my story. Right? And that's what the Niagara Falls Underground Railroad Heritage Center has done for me. Now imagine had that not been preserved, what my story would look like. Would look completely different. So I say that to say that preserving this and starting with the landmark status for this is very important, because if you needed more proof as what historical preservation does for communities of color, I stand here before you as that proof. That's what historical preservation of the Niagara Falls Underground Railroad Heritage Center has done for me, of that Customs House has done for me. And I cannot even imagine what it could do for many Native American communities here and non-Native American communities here. Many marginalized communities in this area, in this city, experience issues, gun violence, substance abuse, mental health issues. What can something like this do that is so harmful to where we're actually questioning preserving this building? And I also just want to leave you with this note. If this wasn't a Native building, if this came from a non-Native standpoint, would we even be questioning it? It's because it's a voice of color. So I also call everybody out in the crowd that may disagree, or anybody, period, that to question your own internal bias, because that also has to do with part of the reasoning why we're here today debating this. It's our internal biases. If this was not a Native building, if this was a building that was not from a community of color, let's call a spade a spade, then we would not be having this argument right now. So that's all I came here to say, and I urge you all to, to vote and to be on the right side of history, because like somebody touched on it before, you don't want to be that person that has a legacy of being the wrong side, because those are the stories that get passed down to our children. And you don't want to be that person that is looked at in a negative light. Nobody does. Right? And what this also can do is urge us to stay here. So many of my peers, they do not want to stay in this city. You know how many people I graduated with that intentionally applied for colleges out of state, because they did not even want to be in New York State, let alone in Niagara Falls? So many people, so many people. So if we want to, if we really care about the economy, like we're saying we do, then we also need to preserve this to urge people to stay here, to establish themselves here, to create families here. Nobody's going to stay here if there's nothing here. So that's all I have to say.
Our final speaker is Ventant Carling.
Esteemed council, and people who stand behind me, love you all. Not only do I want to not just save the Turtle, I want to restore the Turtle, I want to reinvigorate the Turtle, reawaken the Turtle, and reanimate the Turtle. How can you say no to, yeah, absolutely. I mean, I believe, I believe that the Turtle can be one of our points of interest. People come into the, they see the water, they get off the Maid of the Mist, they get done with the Cave of the Winds. Hey, go check out the neck, go check out the Underground Railroad, go check out the aquarium, and go check out the Turtle. Absolutely, that's how we should be, that's how we should be in this city. We should want points of interest. I've never been in the Turtle personally, never been in there, but hearing a kid speak, man, how can you say no to them? Got to love them. They're up here putting it all on the line. Just, I just want to see this, the building preserved, and want to see it, not just, not just here to save it, but to make it grow and come alive. How do we do that the right way? That's the question that I've been asking myself ever since. I sat over here both times for the hearing. I was here for a few hours before, at the last hearing, was at the council meeting before that, when people were speaking up at the hearing. How do we do it the right way? Because the path that we going on is leading to another eminent domain case, which is what we don't need. We have one, we don't need that one, we don't need another one. That one is just as disastrous as it already is. We don't know how much money we're spending. We don't need another eminent domain case. That's the path that we're going on. So how do we do it the right way? What if? Let me, let me give you an example. We want to fix this building, we want to do something with this building. That building is 67,000 square feet, three stories high. One story is 10 feet. So the building is 67,000 square feet, 30 feet high, for a total volume of 2,010,000 square feet. That converts into 74,444 cubic yards. Why we got to convert to cubic yards? Because the cost of concrete, the gentleman said earlier today, that building is, let's just say it was just concrete, it's made of concrete, steel, jewels, other materials, but I just want to use concrete. So we're at 74,444 square yards of concrete. The cost of concrete ranges anywhere from $140 to $170, some places I've seen 200. But the place I'm trusting is $170 per square feet. If you do the math, that's 12-point, that's roughly, 12.7 million dollars in just material costs of concrete. What does that have to do with anything? If we, if we are really serious about preserving, saving, restoring, reinvigorating this Turtle, that is the minimal amount of money we, the people, should get together and raise and come to the table saying, hey, Mr. Owner, we have this money, can we talk? Can we talk? That's, I've heard the, I've heard the resources of the people behind me, the knowledge, the heart, the passion, the technical of how to maneuver a cultural center, how to restore a building. We restored the neck. Why can't we tonight, right here, after the meeting, of course, it's been going on long enough, but after the meeting, start and have people have a 501(c)(3) tonight called Save the Turtle? And what is our first target? To raise 12.7 million dollars, so that we can say, hey, Mr. Owner, let's talk. Because that's what we're missing. I'm about public partnerships, private to private, or public to private. That's how we get things done in a way that everybody win. It's a win-win situation for everybody. We get a group of people from this room, we say, hey, Mr. Owner, let's sit down, have a repose spa, and let's sit at the table and talk. In the meantime, we got a 501(c)(3), we can, we're shooting to raise 12.7 million dollars, and that's the minimum. We don't know what number they want, but let's just say we just raised 12.7 million dollars. That's the cover, the cost of the material, and we could just, and in the meantime, we allow the council to have some time to watch us, to watch the people take action. So they hold off on their decision, because that may seem like an aggressive move to them, not to us, to them, to the people who own it. But we say, let's come to the table, let's meet at the table. We'll build, we'll have 12.7 million dollars in our 501(c)(3) account. We come to the table saying, hey, we want to buy the building for the people, by the people. We, the people, will speak. That's my recommendation. Thank you.
Council Chair President. Council Chair Person.
All right, that concludes our public speaking.
Microphone.
Sorry. All right, that concludes our public speakers for this evening. On the agenda items, we have administrative updates.
We should have a good idea where we're at with the general fund at the next council meeting, so.
And do we have any community happenings for anybody? And do we have any community happenings for anybody?
There is a community meeting on Friday evening at Doris Jones Family Resource Center. That's at 6:00 to 7:30. And then there is a workshop happening at Christ Tabernacle Church on Saturday afternoon from 1:00 to 3:00. The first thing is Friday, 6:00 to 7:30, and the others at Christ Tabernacle, Saturday afternoon, 1:00 to 3:00.
Councilmember Archie, I just want to confirm, Friday between 6:00 and 7:30 at the Doris Jones.
Doris Jones Family Resource Building.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, okay. All right, we are now at the review, uh, adapting of the agenda items. Council members have had, uh, since last Friday evening to review our agenda items and the minutes from, uh, February 7th. Are there any changes or amendments you want to make to the minutes? Okay, if there are no changes, we'll, um, accept them as the rest, okay? Okay. All righty. Um, now we're on to the, um.
We have to, uh, finish up, um, section four by, yep. Nope, uh, and section four, um, we're at the point where you ask if there's a motion to conduct a roll call, vote to adopt the agenda as proposed.
Motion.
Counselmember Archie?
Yes.
Counselmember Banks?
Yes.
Counselmember Myers?
Yes.
Counselmember Zajak?
Yes.
Five days.
And the agenda is adopted as, I apologize, I got a little bit excited with all the speakers here this evening and the long meeting we have going on. Where you take my nap, you know, I'm an old man. Okay. So now from the city clerk's office, we have a few items there that we have received. Um, do we want to review those?
So, the city clerk's office has received, filed.
We just have to get it back on track. We're at section five of the agenda. And at this point at the meeting, uh, the next item is, uh, review and approval of the minutes for the meeting on February 7th. So if you're following the script, we're at the bottom of page two. And then once we get through that, we'll get to section six, which is the informational items received and filed.
Onto the items for council action. Uh, review. Red section four A, the agenda set aside.
We just got to meet that.
Okay. So we, we reviewed the minutes, we've accepted them. Okay. Red section five A. Regular meeting. Six A. So we're at seven, huh? What? Are we at section seven? Are we at section seven?
Approve.
Take two.
Yep.
We went through the review of the minutes. Okay, folks, we're back on track. We got it. All right. Okay. We review the minutes from February 7th. Everybody's had them, we've had a look at them. Is there, are there any changes from the minutes that we received from February 7th, 2024? No? We, okay, move to accept them? We accept them as?
Yes, you did, as approved, as distributed.
As distributed, right, okay. All righty, so.
Now we, now we do the section seven.
Okay.
Okay. Information, informational items from the city clerk's office. A, report of license issued and collections made in the office of the clerk during January 2024. B, submission of the Niagara Falls High School Native Youth Club supporting historic structured designation for the turtle. Item C, submission from attorneys for the owner of the turtle, NFR Turtle LLC, opposing historic structural designation for the turtle. Those have received 22124 letter of Harder Sacred Emery LLP. Those items have been received and filed in the clerk's office.
Okay, on to, um, item number seven, action items number seven. We've had a chance to review all the legislative items since Friday. Action item number one, we have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move the council vote to approve and authorize the mayor to execute any deeds or other documents necessary to efficate the sale of city-owned real property at 15565th Street to Habitat for Humanity as more fully outlined in the mayor's recommendation letter dated February 29th, 2024.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Dante's second. Okay, roll call, please. Roll call?
Not yet.
No.
Any opposition?
First, uh, Mr. Chairman, we have to restate the motion.
Dante's second, did it?
Yes.
Any, any questions? Anyone opposed? Any argument, debate? Okay, we roll.
Counselmember Archie?
Yes.
Counselmember Banks?
Yes.
Counselmember Myers?
Yes.
Counsel, council chairperson Perry?
Yes.
Five days.
Okay, action, legislative action number, item two. We had a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move the council vote to approve and authorize the mayor to execute any deeds or other documents necessary to efficate the sale of city-owned real property at 6007 Frontier Avenue to Habitat, to Habitat for Humanity as more fully outlined in the mayor's recommendation letter dated February 29th, 2024.
Okay, do we have a second?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any questions? Any opposition, debate? Okay, let's call the roll, please.
Counselmember Archie?
Yes.
Counselmember Banks?
Yes.
Counselmember Myers?
Yes.
Counsel member Zajak?
Yes.
Council chairperson Perry?
Yes.
Five days.
The motion is adopted. Action, legislative action number three. May I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move the council vote to approve and authorize the mayor to execute any deeds or other documents necessary to efficate the sale of city-owned real property at 335 Scroose Avenue to Christopher M. Glass as more fully outlined in the mayor's recommendation letter dated February 29th, 2024.
Have a second. Take your second. Okay. All right, um, do we have any questions? Any debate? Okay. Roll, please.
Counselmember Archie?
Yes.
Counselmember Banks?
Yes.
Counselmember Myers?
Yes.
Counselmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council chairperson Perry?
Yes.
Five days.
Five days, the motion is adopted. Action, legislative action number four. We have a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move the council vote to approve and authorize the mayor to execute any deeds or other documents necessary to efficate the sale of eight parcels of city-owned real property to the Niagara Orleans Regional Land Improvement Corporation, Norlik, as more fully outlined in the mayor's recommendation letter dated February 29th, 2024.
Thank you. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Okay, Brian's second. Okay. Any questions?
With, with the statement, yes. So, um, I know in just looking into this, while I, I definitely appreciate, um, working with the land bank to try to get the abandon taken care of, I'm, I'm not understanding why they're listed on the, on their website prior to us voting. And so I think we need to, um, adjust the process so that it doesn't appear properties are available before we vote to say, yes, they're available. Oh, no. So it's something that we need to pay attention to. I've already talked to our attorney, but I don't know if anybody else.
I think, uh, I, I.
At this point, we're, Robert rules ask for, any request for information, um, I, I realize, you know, people want to make a point and, but if there is no actual request for information, it's, uh, those comments have to be saved for another time.
Why are the, why are the photos up there before, before we vote? Is that better?
You and I, uh, exchange information on that, um, and I, you know, as I indicated, we'll be talking to Norlik.
So, I guess, uh, my question is, is it fair practice for us to vote on something where it's inside of their website as if they own it now, and it's made to seem as if we're just going to just go ahead and give it to them and they, i- is that, is that the narrative that they're doing? Because in that case, that's definitely going to have an effect on my vote.
I can't speak for Norlik for their motivations.
I got you.
Tell you, as I indicated to, I, I believe I copied all of you, right? So actually what I'm saying is not going to be new information, uh, but I'll say it for the benefit for everyone else, I guess. So Norlik, uh, has apparently listed the eight properties on their website, and it does give the impression that they already own them, but, but they don't. And they know that, and no one can make an offer on those properties because, uh, according to their application process, if you're interested in a property, you have to get an application, you have to say that you are familiar with the property report, and then make your pitch to Norlik as to, you know, how much money do you want to invest in the property? What, what, what might you pay for the property? Here's my plan. But none of that can happen for these eight properties because, uh, none of the property reports are listed. So it's a little bit like going to Zillow and discovering that the house that you, you don't have up for sale when you live in is shown on Zillow. And just because it's on their website, uh, doesn't mean that, uh, it's going to be up for sale, uh, today, tomorrow, or a year from now. But, you know, it may seem like, uh, Norlik is jumping the gun, but actually, nobody can put in an application, uh, until the property reports are up. And I'm sure that the property reports won't go up until Norlik knows the outcome of tonight's vote.
Does that seem more like a false advertising?
So now we've got me confused. Okay, so we have debate on this, or we're gonna?
I'm not going to be, I know my vote.
So are we going to vote? You ready for a vote?
Uh, absolutely.
Next question, is there any opposition?
Didn't know if you heard me. I don't know if you heard me, but I just asked, is there any opposition? We got debate on this, or?
No.
Okay. So there is none, so we go ahead, take the roll.
Counselmember Archie?
Yes.
Counselmember Banks?
Yes.
Counsel member Myers?
No.
Counsel member Zajak?
Yes.
Counsel member Perry? Council chairperson Perry?
Yes, but now I'm really confused.
I have four gates on board.
The resolution is adopted, but if you get into this more.
I'm sorry, council chairperson, you said?
Adopted, adopted. Okay, adopted, okay. Okay, um, God, this is a confusing night. Okay. Number, action number five, legislative item number five. Okay, uh, can I get a motion for number five, item number five?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I will move that the council vote to approve, uh, the award of bid number 2024-1 for sale of Street Milling to Holcomb Querries, Quarries of New York Inc., and authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with that successful bidder as more fully outlined in the mayor's recommendation memo dated February 29th, 2024.
Okay, can I get a second for that? You got a second? Okay. Are there any questions? Any opposition? Any debate? Elizabeth, take the roll, please.
Counselmember Archie?
Yes.
Counselmember Banks?
Yes.
Counsel member Myers?
Yes.
Counsel member Zajak?
Yes.
Council chairperson Perry?
Yes.
Five days.
Motion's adopted. Okay, this is the one we've all been waiting for, huh? Okay. Okay, resolution number six. Can I get a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move the council vote to approve resolution relative to designating the building at 25 Rainbow Boulevard in the city of Niagara Falls, New York, known as the Turtle, as a historic structure under sections 133 dot 05 dash 1A and 133 dot 05 dash 2 IK of char, of chapter 1335 of the codified ordinances of the city of Niagara Falls, New York.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Do we have any questions? Okay, we're at the?
Not necessarily questions.
Well, we're going to get to the debate, all right. Any, okay, no questions?
I do have a question, um, related to this. Does the, the, the status, we, we've heard a lot about the, you know, outfitting the turtle and, and, uh, as a cultural center and a heritage, uh, to celebrate the heritage. Does the status require the landowner, NFR, to move in that direction and to do those types of things?
I just want to make sure that I understand the question. I think what you're asking me is, correct me if I'm wrong, if, if the council were to vote, uh, in the affirmative that the turtle is now an historic structure, at least under city ordinance, are you asking me, would it require the owner to develop into a cultural, uh, a cultural site, or?
Exactly. Does, does it require them to, yes, to, to honor, to, to move in that direction as to what the historical status is? Or could they develop that space into anything, something different?
Uh, if, if they, if they, um, if they can figure out a use of the building that preserves, for example... for example, the exterior, uh, components of, of the building, um, they are, they're not forced to put it to any particular use, uh, and to be explicit, uh, historic structure status will not, uh, require the current owner to reopen the Turtle, uh, as a cultural center, or, um, an historical museum, or anything like that. They could, but there's nothing that's twisting their arm in, in the designation of historic structure.
Let me ask a question on this, as a chairperson. I'm no lawyer, but, if it has historical, uh, if, if we give it historical relevance and, okay, so we landmark it, and it's, it's designated as the Turtle LLC owned by NFR, and they keep a dollar in their account, and the place is falling apart, is there a legal way, could the city come in and say, hey, you have to restore this? And they say, geez, we only got a dollar in our account, what are we gonna do?
Hypothetical question, but, um, let me, let me start by saying this, that if, if the building, um, if the building is structurally unsound, and it does not have historic structure designation, um, our codes department, um, has at its, at its, uh, disposal, the, the building ordinances that can be used against any property owner, uh, whether it's an historic structure or not, um, so there is some enforcement, um, that could be had if the, if the building starts to, uh, fall apart, whether it has structure status or not. Uh, it's been explained to me that, um, what happens, what, what's different if you vote to give this building historic, uh, structure status, uh, is that it will add another layer of oversight, so, for example, currently, if, uh, the owner of the Turtle wanted to do some interior renovation, maybe to, uh, build a suit for a new tenant, they would have to come to the codes department and present their plans and buy a permit for electrical, for structural work. If they, if they get historical structure status, they will still need to go through the normal course of getting a permit and getting electrical inspection and, and structural inspections from our code officers. What's different is that there'll be another layer, um, that they have to pass through, uh, another layer of inspection, so to speak, or oversight, um, they will need to get a certificate of authorization, uh, which is, you can, you can equate that to a permit. It's, it's a second permit that they will need to get, but this, the ordinance calls it a, a certificate of authorization, and that requires them to, uh, go directly from the codes department, right over to the Historic Preservation Commission, and request that commission to okay whatever they're planning. Uh, now, if either of those components, either our codes department or Historic Preservation Commission, in one case refuses to give a permit, in the other case refuses to give a certificate of authorization, then whatever the, whatever the owner has planned cannot go forward. Now, uh, the ordinance creates an avenue for the owner to appeal any decision, any adverse decision by the preservation, uh, by the Historic Preservation Commission. For example, um, I should add this as well, uh, if you, if you designate the building as an historic structure under the city ordinance, that is not a guarantee that the building will not be demolished, um, but the demolition process, if it were to be pursued, would have to go to the Historic Preservation Commission for a certificate of authorization, as well as through our codes department for the usual permit process that you normally get when you're demolishing any other building. Uh, the ordinance has a provision that, uh, if, if they get a negative decision from the commission, there's an appeal process, um, and there are many criteria that they have to meet, it's conceivable that they could meet, uh, the criteria, and the demolition could go forward anyway.
I had this discussion, you and I, it, it doesn't stop, it doesn't stop NFR, it doesn't make NFR do it, they got deep pockets, if they want to do whatever they want to do, they're gonna do whatever they're gonna do, it doesn't basically do anything for them, they don't, it doesn't mean anything, the reality, it doesn't change reality.
It doesn't change, um, the ability of the parties to, uh, meet, speak, and negotiate. When I'm, when I talk about the parties, I'm talking about the owner, um, the Turtle LLC, and any group of, of people who join together, uh, whether it's in a 501(c)(3) or some other community organization, um, whether it has historic status or not, there's nothing to prevent that, that community group from saying to the owner, we have put together an offer, and we'd like to buy the building from you.
There's a lot of misconception, people don't understand what that means.
Demolish the Turtle, I mean, there's some speakers who, who make it sound like if, if you don't give it historic status tonight, the building will come down tomorrow, it's, it's not, uh, there, there is no paperwork, um, that's been filed with the city to even start that process, so.
Debate part of it.
If this is landmarked, there's nothing in the ordinance that forces, if it's NFR or any other landowner, if we're doing this to their property, to work with any outside individual or group to preserve the building.
I would say that, that's an accurate statement, it, they, they don't, the ordinance doesn't force them to, um, work cooperatively with anyone but themselves, and in other words, they, they don't have to, and, they could, but they don't, we can't force them to, uh, partner with a community group that's interested in restoring the Turtle. And so, this historic structure status is, is not going to make that happen, some, some other efforts will have to be made outside of the city ordinance and outside of the immediate question that you're asked to vote on tonight.
Last, just one, could re, could an application be brought forward at a, another time, should it not, should it not pass tonight?
That is a very interesting question, um. First, I have to say that I, I don't think the city has had much experience watching this ordinance actually go into effect and play out, um, but there is, there is a clause in the ordinance, and it's section 1335.05 subdivision J, and it says, "The approval or denial by the city council of a proposed designation as set forth herein shall be final." Um, I, you know, that, this is untested language, but it, it could be interpreted to say that, um, if the vote is either for or against, it's the only vote that can be had, it's a final vote, and it implies that, um, five years from now, or five months from now, if you vote no, um, and someone, someone tries to restart the process, that clause may put an end to that. It could be interpreted as a, as a one-time opportunity for the council to approve or deny it. Now, if you find another attorney, you might find another opinion on that subject, but it's, it's there, and it makes me wonder, um, how it'll play out.
Any other questions? Okay, do we have a debate on this thing? Brian, um...
Debate, I'll say, that's a lot, Tom.
Robert's rules, and so the chairman is asked, is any, anyone opposed, or is there any debate, and if there is someone opposed, they don't get to speak first, the, and I assume, chairman, uh, councilman Archie, that because you sponsored it, that you were in favor of it, so if someone is, is going to oppose, then the floor goes to you, Mr. Archie, to speak in favor first, you get to speak in favor first. So, uh, let's first determine, is there anyone opposed who wishes to debate it?
I'll, I'll say one, thank you.
Who wishes to speak in opposition during this debate section? You're, you're speaking in opposition.
Yes, yes, that's, yes, that's why I called Brian, yes, I'm sorry, I'm not loud, I'm not loud enough tonight, I've been sick a couple days this week, so I'm kind of not myself, I apologize, but...
I won't take too much more. Say thank you first, to everybody that's come out and, um, spoken, brought signs, shown, shown, uh, support for, for the Turtle, I'm, I'm listening, and I'm sitting here thinking, yes, there was a time when the, the Turtle was here, and it was vibrant, and it, and it lost its luster, right? And it was also during a time when Niagara Falls itself, uh, was struggling, um, losing investment, being disinvested in, in specific pieces of our, of our city, uh, you know, specifically the north end, if, if I want to be, you know, really wide open with this. Um, the current landowners, uh, they could be any company, and, yes, it is their choice to do what they want to do with property that they have, they have purchased, but, you know, there's been no investment or development in this area for decades, I feel that we were in a vulnerable space, and this is what we've kind of sold ourselves into, and, you know, I, I feel like this is the time, um, when we need to actively, um, say no, say no to developers, land grabbers that are, um, coming into our space and really just holding us hostage from anything that could allow our city to flourish and become vibrant. It's not, it's, it's not just about landmark status or being the Turtle, I believe that this is a moment of protest, where we need to say, we are taking back our space, and we are still here, and we are still alive, and we still want to see, um, better, we want to see better for our city, our youth, all of it. We have to stand up, and if we don't, and if it doesn't, doesn't, if it doesn't pass, because I know I am definitely in the, in the minority, uh, that's okay, that doesn't, that doesn't drive the fight away, it doesn't drive the moment of hope away, which is right now. So, so I encourage, I encourage everyone that is here, and that is in favor, of anything that brings their heart joy, or returns, returns them back to a place of hope where they can see a future that may actually do something for them and their families to continue to stand up, and to continue to come here and speak. I'll stop there, and I will yield to you, Jim, go ahead.
Thank you, Brian. Over the, over the past month, there's a Brian about, Brian and I, and I'm saying this for everybody, Brian and I have had many discussions about this, and I understand the emotions, and I have to agree with the emotional side of it, I do, I do bleed for this, um, I, I think the symbolic, the symbolism goes deep, and I have to agree with that, but, first of all, I have to look and I have to say, you know, I, I served ten years in the military, and, and I fought for what I believed is the right of every individual, and I said it before, you have to respect every individual, whether I agree with you or not, I have to respect that, and I have to respect every people that we have in this country. And saying that, I, people, I, I'm on record, you know what I think about NFR, they have done nothing for this city since they came here, and they will probably end up doing nothing to the time I'm dead, I'm probably the oldest person in this room, although I don't look it, I probably am, um, but, I, I don't have any love for NFR, and I will say that publicly, but, having said that, I went down to the Turtle, and the Turtle is falling apart, it is literally falling apart, and I have to think, if I had my house, and someone came and told me, we're going to make this a landmark against my will, I would be, I would be very angry about it, and I would not like it, and I have to respect NFR for that, they don't want it, and I have a very difficult time telling them that we're gonna do this whether you want it or not. So that's, that's where I'm at on this whole decision, I want to vote to give it landmark status, but I'm having a difficult time, because I want to support what's right for a person, and what is right for a people, but this country would be so much better off if we did the right thing for the people, even if we didn't like the people, if we stood up for them, so that's where I'm at, and I apologize for the people out there. Anybody else?
The opposite side, in favor of the Turtle. To speak next, it's gotta fluctuate back and forth.
I think it, I'm kind of like, because I just...
You have to, you have to pick a side and tell us whether you're for it or against it.
There's, there's, there's...
Go for it.
Thank you. All right, so, I'm, because I, I've been hearing about the building, and I'm for preserving this building. The question that I have been asking, and there have been, I've been getting a lot of calls, and the question that I have been asking, is it the building, or is it the land that the building sits on? Um, and, I, I, and it's the, and so, here's the other portion, this is the reason why I asked that question, because I did read the article, I know someone made mention of it, and then it sparked something, and I said, hold on, let me go back really quick, because I want to move forward with that. On record, I want to say, kudos to the young people who definitely came and expressed yourself, because at the end of the day, your voice, it takes a lot, especially the young lady that was nervous, I was there before too, so I understand, um, I think the, the, where I, I read that article, I know a lot of people probably heard about the article in regards to possibly relocation, reason why, and I thought about that, because I had, um, I had a conversation with one of my, uh, one of my mentors, and, like, we talked about the, as Saladin had spoke about a little earlier, the Cataract House, which actually sat in that, almost near that same space where it had, um, you know, that, for those who don't know what the Cataract House represented, it was a space where the hotel that actually helped usher slaves that came from the Underground Railroad to help them to freedom, and going into Canada, um, it's a, so it's a lot of history, of course, in that space by itself, that has already been erased, I don't, I'm not here to erase any more history, but my question would be, have we really exhausted every opportunity? Um, and when I say even with, like, I'm talking about brown, I, I have notes, because it's something that has been weighing heavily, and I, I just, like the other young man said earlier, we definitely need to think before we make decisions up here, now, I know, three of us up here, we've been here for two years, and we do understand that when something is brought to you quickly, and you make a knee-jerk decision, if it goes left, they're gonna look at us, so, with, that, so I'm respecting what he's saying, because the true story is, is that we've experienced that in, in a few cases, and my thing is, the big thing is, is I, I'm, I'm thinking, like, even, let's say, the first street to 56th Street on Buffalo Avenue, where a lot of these industries have left us blank, and it's brownfield, is there brownfield grants that we could actually go for to possibly remediate some of this space and keep it still in the tourism destination without having to go into another possible eminent domain, um, as, uh, as Mr. Colley had made mention before, because the true story is, is that once we go into this eminent domain process, true story is, is lawyers get paid. And, and then there's a fight, and then, once you get in, just like if I remodel my house, or if I want to go deeper into my house, um, yeah, this, this is definitely on the turf, if I want to go deep into my house, and I wanted to do some heavy renovations, and I haven't been in that house for over twenty years, I can think of an idea about how much it would cost, but until I actually... I can think of an idea about how much it would cost, but until I actually start that project, I won't know. And so what happens is, is, and that's why in the beginning when we had the thing, I said, I'm for preserving this building. And I had made mention, I know a few people said, well, we don't have to have a plan, but my thing is, I made mention of a plan for a specific reason, is because this is going to require heavy plan, and if we don't, what they say, if we fail the plan, we plan to fail. So my thing is, is that that's, that's the tug that's within me because again, I'm a black man in Niagara Falls, African American, that has, that understands that I can't even trace my lineage back a handful of generations because most of it is in this, is in this, is in ocean, on our, on our way here in boats. So I, I, as I want to empathize with everyone else, like, kind of like see where my heart is as well. And then, so that's, so it's the turtle, the Cataract House, then I want to say my house because you made a statement. My house was built in 1915. My house could possibly be a historical landmark. And, but if I chose, but we do understand that when you turn something into a historical landmark, I can't even change my windows. I would have to ask, what color can I paint my house? I can't do anything, so I own this place, but then all of a sudden, because a landmark was placed on my house, I can't do what I would like to do with it. So my thing is, is that, and then let me go even further, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go a step further. The step that I'm going to go further is, is I have to, and this is still on the turtle, but it is, I promise you. I went hardcore, for those of you who have been following City Council, I went hardcore against the Centennial Park for a specific reason, is because I asked for some specifics. I asked for the plan, I asked for projections, I asked for certain things. And what happened is, is me morally, if I asked him, the mayor of the administration, and if I felt like I didn't get that from them and I stand here as a representation for all of Niagara Falls, not just who's in this room, but the whole city of Niagara Falls, and I say, I totally go against that and everybody seen me and I do it very public, I have no problem. If I do that, I have to be fair in the same instance where, as I asked, if I said, what are the plans and then who does it belong to at the end? When it comes down to the turtle. Now, I said, now, one of the things is, is I'm like, okay, well, can we move it? So we can get out of this whole idea of fighting with NFR because they, he has train smoke money. If you guys don't understand what that means, when the train is long gone and you see that cloud of smoke that sits there for hours, that's what kind of money Mr. Milstein has. And he will take this and run this straight through the courts and you'll go broke trying to fight him. My thing is, is who will own it at the very end? Who gains the benefit? Because my thing is, is if we, you know, there's, there's a lot of opportunity, economic development opportunities, like I mentioned before. I, it's, it's, it's tough, I guess. I'm just trying to really wrap my mind around it to say, if this something, because to me, it's, it's really knee jerk. I've been here for two years, I've been in this council for the last, I don't know, my mom can tell you about seven, eight years. And for me, it's all, it, it, we got a plethora in a matter of a small time, which is not really fair to us, a plethora of emails that flooded us all at once. And so it's saying, make this decision now, because we're here. I get, I get the frustration, I get, I don't, I don't, I, I'm not a body racist history. However, it's, it's a, it's a tug for me to say, okay, should I do this where in this space I said no? But for the same thing that I'm asking for in this space, do I give a pass where, you know what I mean? I have to live with myself. At the end of the day, when I go home, I got to look myself in the mirror and I got to make sure that whatever choices that I make, that it's fair and that I can say, hey, you know, I voted my heart. Vote the building, yes. Is there another way? Mr. Colley actually mentioned, you know, having a conversation with NFR. Is it going to make any difference? I don't know. But however, at the end of the day, it's still a decision that's going to be very quick. So that's my pull. So I, I, I guess the thing for me is, that's, that's, that's the struggle for myself. I got other notes here too, but I think, you know, we haven't, it's just economic development opportunities that we could have in the event of, you know what I mean, without going through that type of situation and that, and hitting that road again, I'm just...
I just want to say, groups from multiple generations have shared their views, ideas, opinions on why the historical designation. And I want to say thank you for that, for coming out and sharing all of those, those thoughts and ideas here with us. And I know it was not easy, and, you know, for, for many of you and I do appreciate that. It was truly a demonstration of what civic engagement should be, right? So, so I just want to commend everybody for that. I too would like to see the turtle reinvented, reimagined, reawakened, as I see some of the signs out here that say that and full of life to celebrate the culture and the heritage and bring life back to the city of Niagara Falls. I think what I see here is a movement that's starting. Whatever the outcome is here today, I encourage that movement to continue and move forward. Continue and move forward, there's a lot of great ideas. NFR, I hope you're listening, I hope you see what's happening here and I hope you see the enthusiasm and the energy that people have behind what they want to do and see for that structure. I really, really do. I don't know if many know, but my husband is Native American. We've had many discussions about the turtle and about, you know, leading up to what was going to happen tonight. As Mr., or I'm sorry, as Councilman Miles has stated, we too also live in a house that's 100 years old here in the city. So we had those, those talks back and forth, what would happen if our house had that designation? It's the second oldest house on Cuba Island. Somebody could say, yes, we don't want to see it changed because we want it to preserve what's there. And, you know, at the end of the day, this is very emotional, the end of this evening is very emotional and I feel the emotion and it's a tough decision. I got to say, this is probably one of the toughest ones in the two years I've been here, having to make. And I also can't ignore the law as an elected official for U2. So I have to take that into consideration with, 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 with the direction that we vote. And that's, that's my comments on that. David?
So are we ready for a vote? Are we ready for a vote?
Can we please have quiet in the chambers? Councilmember Archie?
Councilmember Banks?
No.
Councilmember Miles?
Due to the fact that I'm going to have to abstain from this. I, 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 I want, I, it's just a lot of questions. I have to, I, I, I'm going to abstain, I...
Councilmember Zech?
No.
Council Chairperson Carey?
Regretfully, I have to vote no.
I have one yea, one abstain, three nays. Okay.
Yes.
I'll give them a ballot.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
We heard...
Let's see how much time we got left on here.
We, we just maybe say...
Yeah, we're just going to give it two minutes.
We need to, like, we have six point minutes.
We're just taking a two-minute recess here. I turned it off because we were talking.
Ladies and gentlemen, everyone please be seated, we're coming back to order. Okay, I hope my microphone's working now, okay? Do you hear me? Okay? All right. We're coming back into session with the public speakers for the good of the community. Elizabeth, do we have a list?
We have a list of speakers. Council Chairperson, if you don't mind me, I just had a few remarks. I just wanted to tell members of the community that I would be announcing the speakers, not from the agenda items, but for the good of the community. So I just wanted to be clear about that, they were two very distinct lists. So if you are not a part, signed up for the good of the community issues, I can't call your name. With that being said, I'm going to go ahead and move forward with that. Our first speaker that we have is Kelly Swegel.
Hello, Council, and the city of Niagara Falls citizens. I'm here for one reason, to inform those of you who may not know the Pit Chick, what my business offers, what is provided to our shelter dogs and what we give the community. Council, it's very nice to meet those of you in person who I have not had the pleasure yet to meet. Some of you I have spoke with at length via telephone last year at the time when the MOU was in effect. To the other Council members, it is my pleasure that we speak for the first time. I appreciate the concern that has been repeatedly brought to the council's attention, not only here in the city of Niagara Falls, but also previously failed attempts in Grand Island. A quick definition to identify what has been going on here. Tortuous interference, this is when a person intentionally damages another's business relationship with someone else, leading to loss. This can occur in various ways, but the most common is when a wrongdoer is encouraging another to break contract with you. It is illegal and is proven guilty and those may be found liable. Some in this room may, should be aware. It is my duty to ensure that every day, every dog in each family that interacts with my business, in whichever way it happens to be, is the best experience they will ever encounter from any animal shelter or related animal complex. There have been questions of how did the current vendor, the Pit Chick, gain the animal shelter contract? Well, merging my animal training business into our brick and mortar location in February of 2023 to better serve my existing and future clients, I was contacted by the city of Tonawanda, which needed a place to house their stray dogs since they received an early termination letter from their current provider. I was grateful for their consideration and knew that with my experience, this was something I was confident would benefit the dogs in the city and of course fulfill my dream of helping local dogs at a larger capacity. I researched and contacted the head veterinarian of New York State Agriculture Markets. With his guidance, I received my registered New York State municipal, municipal shelter certification. Shortly after a conversation with Ag and Markets, I submitted my proposal to the city of Tonawanda to begin April 1st, 2023. It has been no secret that the Niagara County SPCA was eliminating its municipal contracts. It had been prominently mentioned in the public on numerous occasions. This was something I could be, I could help assist based on my extensive experience. But maybe not. I, Kelly Swegel, founder, sole business owner and president of the Pit Chick, contacted municipalities to find out their needs, including but not limited to the city of Niagara Falls. It has also come to my intention that transparency has been questioned. I assure you, the council, if a dog has an irregular bowel movement, a prescribed medication, any injury that has been transferred into rescue, adopted or returned to their owner, the city of Niagara Falls administration can verify each and every update in real time through our shared program, including but not limited to their veterinary records and on a daily view of each dog in which kennel. Transparency is not the cause for concern or the real reason I came to speak. Our shelter prides itself on going above and beyond for dogs and our care. Cruelty cases, they don't need to wait for vetting, wellness or emergency visits, including spay and neuter. This is done as soon as possible with our exclusive veterinarian practice. Dogs that are fully vetted are able to be transferred into rescue foster homes more efficiently. Stray dogs, we do everything in our power to return dogs back to their owners and prevent repeat occurrences. Shelter dogs, receive regular grooming courtesy of Glitter Paws in Grand Island, daily enrichment, behavior assessments, public outings and activities, including bimonthly features with the city of Tonawanda mayor, monthly morning show segments on Channel 4, dedicated support and media shares from Sweet Buffalo as well as Channel 7 to promote adaptable dogs. Since August 12th of 2023, we have microchipped 32 stray dogs at no cost to the owner and at the expense of the Pit Chick's nonprofit rescue organization. We have met owners during off hours because sometimes work gets in the way, right? We have partnered with another local organization, Better Together Pet Resource Center, that financially assists identified owners with fully vetting of Niagara Falls stray dogs at no cost to the owner nor the city for the prevention of litters and ensuring that vaccines are current. I, Kelly Swegel, formed a nonprofit organization in 2023 to continue to support our local dogs in need of wellness, vetting, surgeries, foster care, and so much more. We are in communication with our medical director, a licensed DVM, on almost a daily basis. Our medical director and our partner at Animal Hospital approve any treatments or medications any of the dogs may require. I'd like to offer you, the city of Niagara Falls council, that if you have any questions, please do not hesitate to ask me directly. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. In a private meeting, as I prefer not to engage in the ridiculous claims made by the same few individuals who were once top supporters just a few short months ago. Lastly, I will not tolerate anyone with harmful intent to the dogs, my staff, or the business. I have taken on this position as shelter director to ensure always the safety of each one of those I just mentioned. I will not allow someone with ill intentions to interfere with our efforts here in Western New York. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Carolyn Russo.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Russo, and I met Kelly Swegel a few years ago when she held a leadership position with 716 Paws. During her time with the rescue, she advocated and trained dogs that were in foster care while they prepared to find their forever homes. I built a rapport with her that continued once she left the rescue to pursue her training business. She is a respected part of the rescue community among presidents who seek out her guidance when they have foster dogs needing training or boarding at the facility. In August 2023, I approached her as I had been laid off from my full-time job in May when she was looking to add to her kennel staff. I was quickly hired because of my experience with various breeds and understood the demands of the position. It is not for the faint of heart. Since I've started, I have been trained on how to handle dogs that are brought in from animal control so that they are properly taken care of after being rescued from abuse, neglect, or being found on the streets. She has taught me a great deal, and I enjoy doing enrichment with our dogs and teaching them that not all humans are evil. I can attest to the information being passed to Janine Gallo is from a former employee who is now employed with Extra Dine Beck, Ms. Gallo's business. For some reason, this employee, former employee, has spread false stories, and for what gain? The character assassination of Kelly being brought on by Janine Gallo and Tanya Barone is both disgusting and upsetting.
I'm sorry, I'm speaking. I'm at the podium.
That's the city council, okay? Don't, no names.
Albert Einstein said, "The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again, but expecting different results." Tanya continuously prides people for information about the shelter. She's even posted on the Grand Island New York Lost and Found Pets page asking residents about the shelter. Under the New York State Foil Act, she can request whatever information she desires from Niagara Falls. Based on what she presents at this podium, it is evident she hasn't done that. The allegations of abuse from staff of the Pit Chick is completely false. If they were true, I would have reported them myself and left. I question the integrity of Ms. Gallo's actions since the release of the shelter contract when she had firsthand knowledge of the Pit Chick and the city of Niagara Falls's communications regarding the possible partnership. Janine has called every agency with complaints and sent council members to the facility. She calls the staff inadequate to do our jobs. She has absolutely no idea what it takes to run a shelter. We have had the Grand Island Code Enforcement and Town Inspector, Department of Health, Erie County SPCA, and New York State Agriculture and Markets inspect the facility, and nothing they've witnessed has raised red flags. The only red flags are sitting before this council. They are named Janine Gallo, Nicole Dyer, Janine's girlfriend, and Tanya Barone. A simple Google search of Janine Gallo will tell you all you need to know about her. A contract with them would certainly bring more problems than solutions, and I believe their behavior at these council meetings highlights that. Thank you.
Let's try and keep personal issues out of this, okay? We're gonna, I'm gonna, one more outburst, and I'm gonna have you escorted out of here, okay? And I don't want any personal fights, okay? If you want to take personal fights, go outside, and you guys can tough it up and we'll have the cops break you up, okay? Keep it professional and address the council, okay? Thank you.
Our contract is stopped, and it should stay that way. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jody Hoffman.
Good evening. My name is Jody, and I'm here to talk about the Niagara Falls Dog Shelter. I know you've heard from the same four people each meeting talking about how horrible of a job Kelly's doing, but I'm here to tell you how amazing she is doing. I'm not getting my information from an ex-employee or somebody who never met Kelly or someone who tried to take over her business by offering her to buy her building. I am talking about firsthand, who've seen it firsthand with my own eyes. I guess I'm confused on how these people are all saying these negative things today. We're recently supporters. What changed from then till now? Well, on September 7th, 2023, the Niagara Gazette printed an article stating how much the city pays Kelly. Money makes people do crazy things, and that's exactly what we're seeing here today. What I find odd is that nobody cared about the stray dogs in Niagara Falls until the article was published. Why isn't anyone caring about the stray dogs of the city of Tonawanda that are in the same shelter? Why? Because it doesn't pay what Niagara Falls' contract pays. I have screenshots of some of the ex-supporters on Facebook stating, and I quote, "Kelly, the owner of the Pit Chick, is doing a great job with our homeless pets, but it takes a village to help all animals." Then a few months later, she's asking questions about Kelly on Facebook. When she did not like that there was nothing but good things to say, she would interrogate them until they felt harassed and they need to not answer anymore. A gentleman who just adopted his new companion commented how wonderful his experience was, and she questioned him until his response was, "I answered your questions. This is weird. I'm out." Then the post magically disappeared because they didn't get the response they wanted. I even have a video of an ex supporter who attends these meetings shouting, "Kelly is the best dog trainer in the world." Funny how things change. Everyone is so worried about how Kelly got this contract, what they, why did she get the contract? Well, she was the only one at the time who wanted it. Nobody else in this room contacted anybody about this contract. I could tell you that Kelly's been in the vet and rescue business for many years and has great reputation with many rescues and vet hospitals. How many years does any of these so-called experts have in this business? I believe none. The definition of the word fact, a thing that is known or proved to be true. Now let's talk about these council members who are showing up at her business. The first one was an ex-council member who showed up when Kelly was at home with COVID. He was let inside by this former employee, and they spoke for a while about what the facility has to offer. When they were done, he left on his own. He was never denied access. Just so happens, the former employee called Kelly and also told her that she didn't like his vibe. Shortly after Kelly spoke with one of the council members and they had a lengthy conversation. And what was the reason for the soon-to-be Grand Island council member to show up at her facility and demand to be let inside? There was none. Here's a little fact for you. The reason the soon-to-be council member was refused an inspection was because his superiors advised Kelly to contact the police if he shows up because at the time he was requesting entry, he was not sworn in as a Grand Island council member. If anybody is concerned about what's going on there, call the health department. Well, they already did. Or the Erie County SPCA, AG and Markets, sheriffs, the town of Grand Island inspector. They've all gone there, and they've all found that all these claims are unfounded and untrue. These people who are making these allegations have never stepped foot in this building. How does one person have so much to say if they've never even been there? I do volunteer work for the organization, and I call in schedule when I want to show up. Some of these dogs have been abused and mistreated, and people just showing up to snoop around disrupts their daily routines. What you don't know is the number of dogs that Kelly has saved is extremely, extremely high. Without Kelly, there'd be so many more dogs on the streets and possibly dead. Kelvin was recently a dog that was adopted, and his new owner sent this message over recently. And it states, "Thanks again so much. Kelvin did well at the vet, and they were impressed with what your organization did for him, as are we. I will definitely recommend you as a rescue resource and a worthy charitable cause." There are many more statements we have like this. I've boarded my dog with Kelly. My dog is trained with Kelly, and I've seen the shelter. I've known Kelly for many years. I would have to agree with the statement I spoke about earlier. I do believe she is the best dog trainer in the world. Not only do the dogs in the shelter get the necessary vet services, there are receipts for everyone, but they also get the love and care that they were lacking in their previous home. Anyone who knows Kelly knows how much she loves animals. Anyone who knows Kelly knows she would do anything possible to take care of these dogs. I've seen Kelly miss birthday parties, holidays, her own birthday party because she was helping transport a dog this past Thanksgiving. My own dog took a turn for the worse, and it was Kelly who made that call to her medical director who offered to open the clinic on a holiday. After my pup was no longer in pain and suffering, Kelly drove my dog to the crematory so I could go home and grieve with my family, and she was with less time with her family on Thanksgiving. She sounds like a terrible person, doesn't she? Well, I know ex-supporters at the meeting here were demanding an RFP, but you know, I'll tell you, when you do put that RFP out, you will not find anybody as more qualified.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kim Roder. I'm sorry, say it again, please. Roderfer, I'm sorry.
Hi, good evening. We're gonna do a little shift here. I understand this isn't your typical complaint concern. However, I would like to address the procedures and protocols of this forum. After watching a few sessions online and witnessing posts on social medias of others, I find their actions very disturbing. I continue to see some using it as their own personal circus, like a kid in a candy store, hoping that their mommy will break, give them their lollipop, just to shut them up. Yes, this is a public forum, and the community needs to come and address their concerns. However, there needs to be some accountability when one continues to willfully come in and perjure themselves for their own malicious intent. Being able to stand here and address this panel should be held as the same standards as if you were speaking in front of any other government forum. If one understands using this forum to perjure themselves willingly and knowingly as a tool for harassment, slander, and any other malicious act, there are consequences, and can find themselves charged with perjury, they may not come and do it. It will eliminate people from wasting your time and trying to use it for their own malicious intent, leaving more opportunity for people to voice legitimate concerns. I would also like to add, as without doubt, some are here today to continue their malicious acts further. As it appears, there are no boundaries they will not cross, including contacting people who have asked not to be contacted, and despite that, they continue to contact them. I will say, Ms. Barone, who contacted my rescue partner after being told not to contact her, to try to sway her in to come in and lie for her regarding Ms. Swegel and the Pit Chick. So on several occasions, I have visited Kelly's establishment, most of them as poppins without her knowing I was coming. I was welcomed in every single time because I wasn't there for ill intent. I was there to see, are the dogs being cared for? Is the place clean? Never once did I have a concern. Dogs running on treadmills, being walked up and down the street, place is immaculate. Being a former employee of the Niagara SPCA, this place is a thousand times better. Thousand times better. And just because one is friends with the director there and wants to come here today to try and cause trouble because now they're upset they don't have the contract, too bad. You can't throw something away, and then when somebody does it better, expect to get it back. It doesn't work like that. Or expect to steal the contract away from a beautiful facility to stick it in a bottle redemption facility. It's not, make it make sense. Doesn't make any sense. So with that being said, my hopes are going forward, there is a protocol set forth here for this forum and any other government forum, that anybody coming forward here to speak, if they knowingly and willingly are here to perjure themselves for their own malicious intent, they be held accountable. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Emily Harrison.
Good evening. I was here at the last meeting, so I'm here again. The first thing I'm gonna read off is a statement from our grooming facility that is right next door, to which she wrote, "To the Niagara Falls City Council, I give full permission for my statement to be read in my absence. I am the business owner of the Glitter Paws Grooming Salon, Myra Rodriguez, and I am in the neighboring suite to Kelly Swegel's, the Pit Chick and Rescue Buffalo. I am writing this statement to you as a personal testimony and witness to the wonderful work Ms. Swegel is doing next door. I have seen the devotion and dedication she puts forth to make sure her team and herself run an efficient and safe rescue for the pups in her care. I help her bathe the dogs in her care as well as give her access to the tubs and the salon after hours for her kennel tax to ensure they have a chance to feel clean once they are in her placement. Not only do they get clean, but they get skin treatments like oatmeal and medicated baths the pups may need to make sure they start their external healing process. Every day, I watch her team and herself wash towels, blankets, leashes, and toys, et cetera, to ensure that her rescue cases have clean and sanitary items to play with, lay in, and walk with. I see her team taking the pups out on daily walks. With all of this said, I am saddened to hear that Janine Gallo keeps fighting against the business in rescue. She isn't there to see the maintenance, training, or dedication that Ms. Swegel and her team deliver to the pups in the Pit Chick or Rescue Buffalo. I have personally met Gallo a total of three times, and I was introduced to her by Kelly Swegel so I could do Gallo's pups, Boo's nail trim. During her third visit with me, Gallo tried to offer me money so I would no longer make the back of my suite accessible to Ms. Swegel. After that visit in December, I made Ms. Gallo aware via voicemail that I would no longer be servicing her pup for her podicures as I saw it as a conflict of interest. Early February, as Gallo attended an adoption event Rescue Buffalo was participating in, she had her friend Nicole try to bring Boo in for a service and would try to pass her off as Nicole's pup. I wasn't available at the time, so I had Nicole call back to set an appointment as Boo had reactive tendencies. I then had to reach out to Nicole and let her be aware that I was no longer servicing Boo due to the conflict of interest that had risen from Boo's last service. Nicole was understanding and said it was unfortunate. Right afterwards, I received several calls, about nine, from an unknown number that wouldn't leave a message. I received several calls from this unknown number throughout the following days until a Tuesday when I finally picked up and it was who I assumed it was, Janine Gallo. She was irate and very confrontational towards me. She even lied about Boo not being her dog and insisted it was Nicole's. However, I had received her baby's paperwork information in the past and knew that Boo was in fact Gallo's dog. You may be asking yourself why I bring Janine Gallo in this personal testimony. It's a simple answer. Ms. Gallo has shown me that she is relentless, isn't afraid of using intimidation tactics, and lies when something doesn't go her way. She speaks without unfounded proof and seems to have a personal agenda against Ms. Swegel and her business. I work seven days a week in long hours most days except for shortened days, Mondays and Wednesdays. I am next door, and I witness so much of the wonderful work the Pit Chick and Rescue Buffalo is doing as a respected business organization for your town by homing your strays and neglected cases. My journey in pet services started at an underfounded animal shelter in northeast Los Angeles when I was a young teenager, and over a decade, and I have seen badly-run rescues and people who don't belong in the rescue world. I can guarantee that being a part of this rescue world isn't easy, but Ms. Swegel has found a dedicated team, and she herself is an outstanding citizen whose heart and soul is dedicated to the best care of your rescues. I hope you read my statement with an open heart and mind. Myra Rodriguez. One final statement I would like to make is personal. We are often stricken without words due to the abuse and neglect and torture we witness and receive day in and day out. It takes a dedicated team, one of which I have the pleasure to be a part of, to do the things we do every day. We are always the first, and unfortunately, sometimes the last ounce of love a dog receives when they immediately come into our shelter. It takes an emotional and physical toll that no ordinary person can handle, but we do. We will not take the false allegations and lies laying down. The consistent harassment we have endured for months, both online and in person, specifically shows the amount of immaturity this group of people possess. We don't participate in the bullying. We have exhibited nothing but professionalism throughout everything. We come equipped with proof, evidence, screenshots, threatening voicemails, et cetera. Some of those threatening voicemails occurred right after the last council meeting as well. Our shelter is not a showcase. We are not an SPCA. We take in the municipalities that society has failed. So with that comes dogs who are sick, dogs who have been tased or shot, dogs who are in constant flight or fight mode, dogs who have been beat, starved, or kicked, dogs with behavioral issues, et cetera. dogs who have been beat, starved, or kicked, dogs with behavioral issues, et cetera. We have nothing to hide, so if you want to make a real difference in your community, then sign up to volunteer with us and be a part of a dog's new foundation of trust. There's so much more I wish I could squeeze in, but I will just leave this podium with a thank you for your time and listening ears.
Our next speaker is Janine Gallo.
My name is Janine Gallo, or Gallo, or that lady, whatever you want to call me. I would like to address the residents of Niagara Falls tonight. Let me be transparent, yes, I was asked by Kelly to be a partner at one time. Let me explain. Over three years ago, I worked on a project with Nicole to open a boarding and shelter facility in Niagara County. Word of mouth got back to Kelly in around April of 2023. She approached me about an opportunity and wanted to partner up because she was getting a contract with Niagara Falls. With this came a lot of negative comments concerning Kelly Swegel from the rescue community. I stated my concerns to Kelly at the time, and I began to do my dual diligence, as a good business partner should. In July of 2023, I rescued a dog who was being kept in an attic. I asked Kelly to work with him. She agreed. At that same time, her building was flooding, so Nicole and I came to help out. I asked where Sonny was. She said, oh, Sonny is locked in the bathroom in the kennel because he barks, and he won't stop barking. This is the dog who was taken from the same kind of environment. This was the start of my concerns. As I continued to look at buildings, Kelly stated that she would rather stay in Grand Island than Niagara County. And then I told her I would need a few things from her. I would need a permit, license, boarding members, minutes, and meet the mayor to go over the contract. She said the mayor was aware. Remember, I was buying a $1.4 million building. As weeks passed, I continued to ask Kelly for the information. She told me she was working on it, and her 501(c)(3), she was all four board members, and that she went to Medellin College for her tech degree, and Niagara Falls just needed to know where the building was, and they were still working on the contract. I learned later that that was all untrue. After confirming all of my suspicions, on October 2023, I felt it was not a good business decision. I explained to her that she, her way of doing business was not the way I operate my businesses. I wished her well, and we parted ways. After backing out, I learned that an employee that had left due to her conditions of the dogs and the environment that they were being housed. She began to tell me what was really going on. In that moment, I knew I had made the right decisions to part ways and still had no idea that she had secured a contract until she told me. To prove that there was no hard feelings, Nicole and I brought Nicole's dog, Boo, to get her nails trimmed. I went next door to chat with Kelly. I'll never forget, she was sitting at her desk, eating chips, Tyson was on the treadmill and on the exercise, and the Niagara Falls dogs were next door, not just barking, they were screaming. I was appalled. She was not bothered or concerned of the screaming. I left upset. Kelly Swegel continued to communicate with me, offering me to go to an event a few weeks later, a concert out of town. I declined. On December 2023, a friend of mine who knew the landlord told me she was upset with Kelly. She was trashing her place, the smell of urine, and it was going right through the walls to the fitness center next door. Kelly was going to be getting evicted from the property. This was the last straw. I knew that I had to stop, step up, and do something for the animals. I went to the Grand Island Board meeting and explained to the council my concerns. I then came to Niagara Falls Council meeting, and she was given, where she was given her contract. Let me leave you with this. Some of you might be thinking that it's all about the money. I was offered by the city three times a contract to take over Kelly's overflow. I was asked to the city to name my price. I declined. Do you know why it turned it down? Because the dogs would still be in the hands of the current vendor. Let me be absolutely clear. I work with over 30 rescue groups, and if I ever found out they were against what they were trying to help and what I was trying to help them achieve, I would no longer be part of their cause. We would not be here tonight if she or the city of Niagara Falls was on the up and up with operations and caring of the animal shelter. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Eric Macon.
I'd like to share with you how my journey came to be in advocating for the animals of Niagara Falls. As Janine stated, we have been working on this project for the past three years. She is my biggest supporter, not only financially, but by pushing me to pursue my schooling and passion. I was in the last graduating class from Medellin University. I completed my bachelor's degree in science and an AS in veterinary technology. I also spent one semester in veterinary medical school. In December of '23, I sat for and passed the New York State Boards, and I am licensed to practice as a licensed veterinary technician. I have the knowledge, the experience, and will be the animal expert of our operation. Janine shared with me an opportunity to work with someone who shared the same passion as myself. I agreed to meet her and listen to her vision and observe her daily operations. I had my first experience in July when her building was flooded, and I offered to come and help out. After we were able to get the water situation under control, I asked if I could do anything else for her. She asked me to inventory all of the medications on hand. I had a problem with several medication bottles that should have required a doctor's prescription, such as acupromazine, trezodone, metrodolazine, amoxicillin, to name a few. I also had a problem that she had medications with prescription labels with other animals' names on them. Over the rest of the summer months, I would volunteer at fundraising events. Kelly had one employee who ran the show. She set up and tore down the event single-handedly. I never once saw Kelly at the table interacting with supporters or potential clients unless asked. This employee has hired, working, and very passionate about being a part of something good. Kelly never showed the same excitement. In October of '23, Janine and Kelly went their separate ways, and we continued to push forward. We were informed that the person that Kelly solely depended on had resigned. We had many heartfelt conversations. She would ask questions, make comments, and observe the daily operations of the pit chick. She used the example of the dog named Tyson. Tyson developed a dry cough, and Kelly diagnosed and prescribed dioxysylline, one tablet two times a day, as a vet tech, either licensed or certified. There are four things we cannot do. One, diagnosis. Two, prescribe medication. Three, perform surgery. Four, involve in any law acts. So if I cannot do this, how can she? Did she attend four years of vet school and earn the letters of DVM? After lots of conversations with the ex-employee, I began to do my own research about the daily operations. Having seen the facility firsthand and already being familiar with the regulatory agencies and what it takes to run a shelter, I became more concerned about the welfare of the animals. Not having a veterinary technician on hand at any time, having a well-trained staff to handle potentially dangerous dogs or prescribing medications without supervision of a veterinarian. In December of '25, there will be new regulations concerning the Companion Animal Care Standards Act of Shelters and Rescues. Despite her best efforts to comply, being in a storefront will not accommodate those new requirements, based on space and length of stay of a dog, nor will it be a good ideal to have a shelter in a park or a multi-story building. These would cause more stress for the animals and create unwanted distractions for the workers who are handling the dogs. Again, we are here tonight because there is a problem with the current vendor, and she has not been able to uphold more than one area of her contract. She did not provide training for her employees. She does not have the qualifications that she advertised. All of her training came from AKC, a web-based certification. Watched a few modules, take a quiz, pay a fee, and then get a certificate. You as residents of Niagara Falls should be concerned for the welfare of your own animals. If they become lost and picked up, I pray that they never have to step a paw into our building. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Vincent Colley.
Ladies and gentlemen, the esteemed council, good evening again. Just to reiterate what we're hearing and what we've heard, number one, I'm coming from the, number one, I was invited, I was let in, into Suite 2, but the municipality for Niagara Falls is in Suite 3. So Suite 2 looks good, but what about that suite that you won't let me in over there? So I was not allowed to go into the municipal shelter of Niagara Falls. Number two, there's a difference between boarding and training versus the municipal shelter. The boarding and training can be kept cute and neat and ready for dogs to be in there, but when you're talking about a municipal shelter for stray dogs and for holding dogs and following the rules and the laws and the regulations that was just discussed, that's another story. You can operate a business, you can say, oh, we're going to have an inspection today. You can make it look pretty for that day, but what about the daily operations? What if you're a restaurant and you're spitting in a food? Did the inspectors catch that? No, they didn't. We have people who caught them, quote unquote, I'm not even going to say what it, but daily operations. Number two, what those beautiful ladies don't understand is that the RFP process, more importantly, the RFP process as a municipality is of the utmost importance. Why? Because number one, it's in a New York Conference of Mayors manual. If you don't follow the general municipal law, section 102 or 103, that voids the whole contract.
Mr. Colley, if I can stop you for a second. Mr. Chairperson, I don't know if the microphone's working.
No, you can't, but I mean, does that stop it from being on record?
I don't know. It's a recorder. The recorder picks up everything in this room. And that's also why it's imperative for, while he is talking, everybody else can quiet so that we can pick up, especially now that the mic's out. Can I give you my mic? I think it died. Yeah, I think his died. Iris is dying.
Thank you, Miss Eaton. To continue, starting from the main point of, I mentioned before, Suite 2 versus Suite 3, not sure where the mic cut off, but I was invited into Suite 2, not allowing it in the Suite 3. And also, the New York Conference of Mayors, NICOM manual says that bidding, and for something like this, that's very complex, an RFP process definitely should have been initiated, because they never said how she knew about the Niagara Falls municipal contract. I have no personal animus. This is not about money. I'm up here for what's right, and was right for the city, and was right for the taxpayers, and was right for operating a business that's involving my city. So that's where I'm coming from. And it is just, she mentioned before about, yeah, she was contacted by the city of Tonawanda or the town of Tonawanda, but how do you get the Niagara Falls city contract from that? What is that jump? What's that connection? There's no RFP process. Where was your proposal? What did you propose? What were you responding to? That is of the utmost importance for the general municipal law, as I mentioned before, section 103, the bidding process. And lastly, as I was stating before, it's not worry, I was there for no ill intent. It's just doing due diligence, like Janine was doing when you're going into partnership. If the city is going to partner with someone, we should be doing our due diligence. That's all I was doing. It could have been a beautiful, I could have seen dogs just looking at me, all ready to be adopted. I don't know what I was going there for. I was just going there, just doing due diligence to see what's going on. No ill intent. The other councilman, I spoke to him personally, he wasn't going there for ill intent. He's just going to investigate the situation as a councilman should be doing, doing the due diligence. So there was no ill intent in this situation. We, I, coming to this program and coming to this situation, just want to make things right. Do what's right and correct it. And whatever it takes to do that, so be it. But that's my position in this situation. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nicole Dyer. Nicole? She's, okay. Is she declining? Or, I don't know. Oh. Well, okay. So someone must have wrote her name here. It's written. Okay, so next speaker, William McDougall. Okay. Mr. Ken Hamilton? Is he speaking?
Well, you know, it's initially about the turtle, and I think that you guys did exactly the right thing on that particular issue. Also, reiterating the fact that we have a monument down in Hyde Park made out of granite, and that you need to take the same strong action on that to get rid of that, we have no evidence the man ever lived in Niagara Falls, that this is Sergeant Toy. Not only that, we knew at the time that that monument was made, and we're talking about the ones that look like gravestones, that he was, we had no evidence that he was, and words were saying, I know it's going to piss off the Indians, but we're going to go ahead with it anyway. I need for you to do the right thing about getting them to remove that monument. It's a blight. It's an insult to Native American people. It's an insult to me myself. The other thing, as we're talking about the turtle, one of the issues that I found, I've been with the NFR for, not NFR properly, for almost 30 years. I knew Eddie Coogan, he and I were friends. He introduced me to his family. I was working on the Whirlpool International Truck Bridge Project at the time as their consultant for communities, trying to build businesses here in Niagara Falls so that people would have opportunities to make their own choices because of the opportunities that they have to work. And so, when I hear people say, because, I mean, I was in Albany for the votes on casino gaming, all of these things, I go way back, 44 years in these chambers, and understand things that many people don't understand. One of those things is, is that NFR acquired that property on the basis that New York State was going to authorize state gaming. There was games played between Schumer, not Schumer, between the head of the Assembly and the head of the Senate, where we'll take the money this time, because it had to pass by two consecutive votes. And so one would refuse to vote, the other one would be encouraged to vote, and you just could not get the two on board at the same time. So now, people come to this microphone, come in front of you guys and say that NFR hasn't done anything for the city of Niagara Falls. And I cite an Amherst study done some years ago on the value of business properties and residential properties for every dollar that they collected in business, real estate taxes. They had to only spend 89 cents in servicing and services, and in the case of residential, a dollar 11 cents. So with that in mind, when we started to look, there was a 20% housing overage in the city of Niagara Falls at the time that NFR acquired that property. By taking away all of those houses, it brought the housing balance back down By taking away all of those houses, it brought the housing balance back down, but only to fourteen percent. And when you say that they haven't done anything, they pay their taxes, they keep their grass cut, they make sure that everything is supposed to be in city code, they're bothered every once in a while with that. But the other thing of it is, is that, let's take a look at that one dollar and eleven cents, the eighty-nine cents are the eighty-nine cents that, the difference between what they don't have to spend, and this is free money to the city. Reducing the number of housing, I was in a seminar with, with Robert Wilmers, he was the president of the MNT Banks. Smart, Smart Growth Seminar was taking place over in Buffalo. People are telling them how to increase the size of the city of Buffalo, the population of Buffalo. Wilmer's, he, he was the president of MNT Bank, bright man, one of the bright, I've been around some bright people. And so, Wilmer said after the meeting, or after the people began speaking, had finished speaking, he says, this is Buffalo, we don't have to worry about smart growth because we're shrinking, Niagara Falls is shrinking. He says, what we need to do is learn how to right-size a city. And right-size meaning that you reduce a lot of this extra load that you have, that you've accumulated after you being a city of a hundred and twenty thousand people. And all of these derelict homes, and I'm gonna say here, because I only have a few seconds left, if you wanna know what downtown Niagara Falls and that NFR footprint would look like today had it not been for NFR, drive down South Avenue and Eleventh Street, because that would have been the condition and we could not have afforded to remove all of those houses without that speculation. And so we have to be careful saying they're not doing anything, they're paying their taxes.
Next speaker is Lawrence Blaber.
Uh, Lawrence Blaber, this is more for the good of the council than the community. I am tired of hearing about these dogs. I am extremely tired of hearing about these goddamn dogs. I legitimately don't care. The part of me that has done organizations and stuff is what this is driving me crazy at, because I don't understand why you would choose a topic like dogs for this situation. People absolutely love their dogs. I've, people will step over an unhoused person to take care of their dog. I have a tenant who's making food from scratch. And this is what I don't get, why you die on this hill. I know this is a small city council, so there's no political consultants, but it doesn't make logical sense that this is the hill that you're dying on, because if we talk logically, there are questions regarding how this person got the emergency permit and how we went from four months to a full year contract, and there's been no, and this, this full year contract was no bid, and there's been no explanation. And once you don't give people explanation, you open yourself to malice and questioning of character and questioning of intent, and I don't understand why you do that. And if you, so then no reason to be, okay, well, we just have to reverse gears, but then I don't understand why you're not reversing gears. Do you have a contract that doesn't let you reverse gears? If you have a contract that doesn't let you reverse gears, then you have to ask yourself, what is council doing? Is this like when the city was just selling land to people without a clawback clause so that they could just sit on it for twenty, thirty years? Like, you're not making smart decisions, thinking long-term. So I don't understand why we're logically in this situation fighting and you're dying on this hill. Furthermore, from the political optics perspective, you're now refusing this RFP and nobody knows why you're refusing it, because you could easily just extend, say, in four months, we're gonna terminate the contract and we're gonna open it up to RFPs, because you have to do RFPs for everything else, and let them bid. This pit chick says she's great, this lady here says she's better, let them bid. Actually, if you were even smarter and wanna make, be more hands-on, call Hamburg or West Seneca, have one of their A S P C A guys be a consultant, so when, when decision he makes, you can nip it on him and wash your hands of it, because this is politics. And politics is very emotional. People don't care about logic. People will remember what they remember, especially in small-town politics. Selling houses to Norlack before it's listed won't make a dent. People may not remember that. The dog thing, oh, people will remember, because as I said earlier, people love dogs. Okay? So you're burning political capital you just got at the start of this year. Okay? You, you gotta win by moving the kids from Deboe to Maine, right? You, you're close to that win, but that doesn't help you in Niagara Falls proper or the South, because that doesn't really affect them. You need a citywide win, and you've just taken a huge citywide loss with the turtle, and now you're on the verge of taking another game. And you've got a guy here who's identifying himself as a champion to compete against you when the next election comes. He's already defining himself and defining you, and if you let your opponent define you before you define yourself, you're gonna find yourself spending more time explaining yourself. So when you go to people's doorstep, what are you gonna say about yourself? You gotta hope that you get some wins between now and the next election. I don't know how things break out, and like, I don't know what big topics are gonna show up between now and then that's gonna give you the win. The easier win, RFP, get a consultant to make neutral choice, wash your hands of it, it wasn't my call, it was Jake from West Seneca. Done. But that's just me, what do I know?
Council Chairperson, that is the last speaker. Your name is crossed, much like I have, I have four other names that are also crossed off. I, well, I'm, I'm telling you what I see on the list. If, understand this, I've called speakers and have you noticed that if I call them, they're not even here anymore, or if they've crossed off, I don't know who still remains. I don't know who's done what to the list. It is Council Chairperson Perry, would you like to hear?
Five minutes, we'll let her talk. As long as we don't lose the mic. We're gonna have five, we're gonna have five minutes.
I don't have a problem with it, I'm just telling you.
Make an exception. No, this, we did, that's, that's, this is not, this is really not right, we're making an exception, I, you know.
I'm sorry?
I said, we're just making an exception, you're, if it's crossed out, you called the name?
No. If this is crossed out. If it's crossed off of the list, the thing is, you have probably a hundred people in the hallway. Sometimes people actually sign in, like for example, with Nicole, I called her, her name is actually right above someone's name that got crossed off the list. I don't cross names on or off, I call who's listed.
Someone crossed the name.
So it's possible that her name is crossed off, and sometimes people want to speak and they, and for example, they'll cross their name off because they changed their mind when they sign in, so I only call who I see. If you would like for her to speak, it is public forum, she is more than welcome to do so, under your direction.
Dread, I dread this. Okay, go ahead, speak.
I am here this evening. I am here.
All right. Now you can hear me. First of all, I'm not even gonna say good evening, it's not really been a great evening because my name has been slandered, but I'm still here. That should speak volumes. I guess I'm going to perjure myself at this point, but I'm okay with that because I've seen all the facts, I've talked to the people that were working there. So I'm gonna start by saying I'm here this evening to not only address the city council, but to inform the public Niagara Falls residents, the taxpayers and voters of the scheming private deal of our mayor and the inaction of our council. The council is well aware of the circumstances, facts, falsities, and data surrounding the so-called emergency sheltering contract with Kelly Swagel, also known as the pit chick, boarding, training, municipal shelter, and founder, president of Rescue Buffalo. Wow, did she clone herself? I don't know, but she's doing, doing a lot. So, this was brought to the council in December. Disturbing facts and information has been gathered regarding illegal sedation and neglect of dogs. Our animal control officer, Donnie Booth, and the fact that her business plan submitted to the Grand Island Town Board on February seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three, mentions her negotiations with Donnie. That answers my question, who told Kelly about the contract ending? Just a thought, but I read it, her own words and her business plan. It's questionable. Why did he accompany Ms. Swagel to a December meeting with the planning board in police uniform to help her obtain an amended special use permit to legally kennel more dogs? Prior to that, she was only legally allowed to hold ten dogs. We had a contract for up to seventeen, plus another thirty-one. She's only allowed now, as of January, to hold thirty dogs in both suites combined. She was doing something illegal. Did anyone check that out? Well, because you guys didn't even know. Did the mayor check her out? Don't think so. It's not only about why this job was not publicly posted, but when the mayor was informed two years ago that the SPCA would not be renewing the contract, I hardly call it an emergency. There was no public posting of this job in search for a replacement vendor. This contract, the only one that the taxpayers foot the bill for at a tune of twenty thousand two hundred and seventy dollars a month to house up to seventeen dogs? Plus thirty-seven dollars per dog, per day, in excess of that. The taxpayers, myself included, purchased her kennels, fourteen of them, at a cost of thirteen thousand dollars, bought a fence, and then purchased another thirty-one kennels for her, a total of forty-five kennels. She's only approved for thirty. Ask the Grand Island Planning Board and the council member and look at her special amended use permit. Okay? So she's legally only permitted for thirty dogs total, contract says up to forty-five. Why are we paying her this amount of money? Because she was the only one. The whole shady deal needs to be shut down immediately. The next step is to take it to the public and contact the news. Sounds like Kelly was set up with a business and was intentionally allowed to be the only replacement vendor, and we as taxpayers and residents will not stand for the neglect and mistreatment of our animals or shady backdoor deals, bottom line. Foil request is late, city has not come forward with the disposition of the animals and who is paying for what, just when, it's not looking so good. That's another thing, is they're covering up for something? I don't know, not looking so good. And as far as the drugging of the dogs and her not being a licensed vet tech or a veterinarian, which she needs to be a veterinarian, it's a license to prescribe legally animals medications, they had no labels that could have been dropped off by people that lost their pets, they were not for those specific animals, just to let you know. There are text messages of her prescribing sedatives, anxiety-type medications, and text messages saying that the dog is hanging his head, but he's not being able to lift it up, but he's pushing through the sedative that she prescribed.